Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. It is twoteenth September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We have joined this meeting order at seven oh two. We would like to invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to kick off. Welcome, everyone, to the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six Wellington School District School Year. I'm super excited because tonight we are joined by our new student representatives from high school and center as well. I can't wait. Going on. Eight days, under ten days. You already have a lot to say. That's good for you guys. All right. Principal May, would you like to start? Of course. Great. Who do you have with you tonight?
So I have Evelyn. Evelyn, I think, is a familiar face to the Board of Education. We have, so I started with our seventh grade representatives and we will have others. But for right now, we've got Evelyn. Cole might be joining us by his room. I'm not sure. He is also a familiar face to you all, though.
Are you going to go, Evelyn, or would you want to rather wait a minute for your homework?
I, I told Evelyn for this time around, I'm going to do most of the slides. She's going to jump in when we get to the seventh grade slides.
Got it. Thanks.
So go right ahead. All right. So this is our introduction. Evelyn, here she is. And we started the year with class interrogation with me, held in August. Well attended by parents. I got a lot of really very valuable feedback from people that helped kind of inform some decisions as we started the year. And our next one will be held on October twentieth. There's a daytime session and an evening session, and I plan to do that same rotation quarterly. I'm going to mix up the day of the week and time of the day, hoping that I can hit as many parents as possible. And our fifth graders are acclimating to middle school. They're a little nervous about finding their way around. Fifth grade teachers have been making sure that they know their way around the building and kind of organizing team building activities. Our music ensembles have started meeting. I know that's a big highlight for a lot of our students. Fall sports are underway. And our meets, soccer, cross-country meets and soccer games begin this week. Sounds like we are supposed to have our first soccer game tomorrow. Sounds like the other team may not be able to field a team, which sounds like we are already the winners from my non-athletic perspective. And we are poised to begin our after-school clubs in very, very beginning of October. And when I ask kids what they like so far, overwhelmingly, they love that. One thing we've really tried to do is build some outdoors time into their lunch period at all grade levels. That has been a hit overwhelmingly. So they're very excited about that. They love the choices at lunch. They love the independence. They order their lunch ahead of time. And they really love the locker, especially this young lady. You can't quite see it. She's got some adhesive wallpaper in her locker. She has a fuzzy carpet. There's a lot happening in that locker. So very exciting. Preview of coming attractions. I was in an art class and I wanted to give you this little heads up. This is going to become an art project that will be on display, including every member of the school community. So I wanted you to sort of have a preview of where it started. Mrs. Charri, who was at Center School with our students, has moved with them to Hall. And they are not going to tell you what it's going to be. I'm going to show you when it's done, but I want you to see how it started. And in eighth grade, I've been asking the kids what your favorite thing is so far. What's your favorite thing that you're learning? And in eighth grade, I keep hearing that they are colliding objects. And I was like, tell me a little bit more about that because that sounds potentially dangerous, scary. I don't really know. And then I realized that what they were saying was that they were really beginning introduction to physics and looking at how objects, you know, meet and with what level of force. So the kids were pretty excited about that. In seventh grade, Evelyn, can tell us a little bit about what's happening?
We've been building reading stamina with the text hello universe, getting the basics of measurement down to ensure understandings and more developing into more complex labs.
Anything you want to add about seventh grade, Evelyn?
No, not really.
I have been hearing from a lot of kids that they are excited about the different options in terms of math acceleration in seventh grade. They're excited about that. So that's something else for seventh grade. And in sixth grade, I was in a sixth grade classroom and the kids' minds were blown that deserts can be cold. They are analyzing story structure, doing a little kind of beginning to dig into geometry, looking at how to measure the shapes of area of shapes using manipulatives. And in fifth grade, this, I heard so much about this, next slide, please, this ink creation science lab, the way only fifth graders can tell you about something, which is to tell you every single tiny detail about it. They took these little things and they made ink from these things. They didn't even know that it, that ink could be made. They literally cannot wait to go back to science class. They are so very excited. And that's sort of where we started. We're excited to see you in October, where we'll hopefully have some more cool things to share.
Awesome. Thank you. We're excited for you guys. That's awesome. All right. Hello there, Principal Cushing. Who did you bring with you today?
Good evening. I am proud to present, Wren Lee Palumbo, Emilio Montoya, and Etchimantupi. They are going to share some information from the first eight days of school.
Over the summer, we got a new rubber surface for our playground. It feels really spongy when you walk on it. We need to remember to keep sand off it. The whole playground also has new parts of fencing to keep everyone safe. Also, new grass seeds were planted.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. We also have Joey Hipski, who is very disappointed to not be here to see his name, but he has soccer. So he asked if he could record his.
We have some new teachers this year. Ms. Reynolds is our new third grade teacher. Ms. Wildens is our new art teacher. She's here on Mondays and Wednesdays. Mr. Jordan is a long-term substitute in PE until Mr. Phillips gets back in November.
There you go. Who's got the two win blocks?
This year, we changed the name of Learning Lab to Win, so that it matches what they call it at home. Win stands for what I mean. This year, we have an extra win block. Each block is thirty minutes long. We only had one in the past, but this year, there's one for math and one for ELA. During the math win block, we either work with a teacher in a small group or use extra math on our home books. During the ELA win block, we either work with a teacher in a small group or write in our writing journals.
On Friday, September fifth, the Wellington PTA, most of the annual ice cream social volunteers spoofed three kinds of ice cream, chocolate, vanilla, and strawberry, and helped with poppings like chocolate sauce and sprinkles. After enjoying a sweet treat, kids played on a new playground.
Yeah, for the first time for speaking voices, that would spin fantastic. Great job.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing more from you as the year goes on. You did a wonderful job. This is usually the time where we want you guys to go do some other things like homework, propose some laundry for your mom and dad. Thank you guys for coming. Grab your grownups and put out that babe. Let's one step little on. That was really fantastic.
That's a standard right there, and they just nailed it.
All right, awesome. Thank you for putting that together for us.
That was, I'm going to give the principals a shout out for that, because typically, just pulling that together for this first meeting was very hard. You expect that October. And I think Lisa said, oh, I have my reps. And then Lisa said, hold on. So she pulled together the seventh grade. So we'll, but that was great. Thank you for pulling that together for together. I appreciate that.
All right, we are ready now to hear from our PTA. We're back in the swing of things. So let's hit it.
Back in the swing of things. Karen Reilly, PTA President. Good evening, board members. Must say, amazing job to our newest student representatives. They did an amazing job. On behalf of the PTA, I'd like to thank our community for their continued support of our schools. We have had forty-two members join over the last week, which is absolutely incredible. Today, we posted on our Facebook group that Lego has partnered with us on a membership challenge. So how that works is anyone that has already signed up to join the PTA as a member this school year, as well as anybody else who joins by October first, will be entered to win a day pass for two to Lego land in New York. So that's super exciting. If you want to help sign up, you know, if anyone wants to sign up, let us know. We're happy to help. Last Friday, we held our in-lives from social. We celebrated more than two hundred and fifty of our amazing students, family members, a wonderful start to the school year. It was a beautiful evening full of community laughter and more sprinkles than you could ever imagine. We're so grateful to have the staff, the volunteers, and the families who made it all possible. Looking ahead, we are kicking off our holiday dessert, pies and potato fundraiser, which is a fan favorite. At the end of September, with a delivery date right before Thanksgiving, funds raised will help support fieldwork, classroom enrichments, and student activities. Mark your calendars for one of our biggest events of the year, trunk or treat, which will be held on Friday, October twenty fourth, from six to eight at Central Manchester School. If you or anyone you know is interested in decorating a trunk, let us know. We hope to see you all there. Our first quarterly meeting will be held next Tuesday, September sixteenth, at the Wellington Public Library, six thirty PM, down in the basement conference room. We will have food. We will have drinks, and we will see what's there. As always, our mission is to strengthen the bridge between home and school, and I'm very excited about the positive energy that we're carrying into this year. It's definitely going to be one to remember. So thank you very much for your time. And if anybody ever has questions, feel free to give us an email.
As always, thank you for everything you do for our community. It's really something special, but we're happy. Okay, agenda item five is chairperson report. I just wanted to say again, welcome to a brand new school year. Special thank you to our administrators and custodians for all of the hard work over the summer. It takes a lot to get the programming ready, to get the physical space ready, and none of that goes unnoticed. Thank you so much. And welcome back to everybody who's on our staff, all of our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, everybody. Thank you. Welcome back. We're so glad to have you. Sounds like you've had a great opening so far, so you're off to an awesome start. The big topic for the Board of Education right now has to do with school building projects. I'm sure that most people have heard about it at this point. If you want to review some of that information, or you haven't had a chance to get on board with that topic just yet, you can find the recording from the joint meeting that was held on September fourth online. The Board of Education members met with the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance Representatives, and people from CIP. We also had a state representative and a senator and representative from QANM, our architectural group. And it was a really wonderful collaborative discussion about what is best for Wellington and how to move forward and how to take advantage of a very special reimbursement rate right now. So please do participate. Please find out more information. Come to us for factual information. And there is an EdSpec checklist out there. The educational specifications are a list created by the Group of Board of Education members that states what is necessary for our programs to withstand or to stand up in our school buildings. So we need some feedback from those of you who have children in the buildings, but also others of you in town as well who know what is important, who think you have ideas about what our children should have access to in the school buildings. That's one of our biggest tasks right now, is looking through the current EdSpecs that was made from a prior Board of Education group. And we really are happy to do that, but we really don't feel like we're adequately prepared to speak for everyone. So please participate. Go ahead and do that checklist. You can find that online, I think, on the school website also, the district website. Is that right?
Checklist on Facebook. On Facebook.
On Facebook. Okay. Will we get that in digital backpack somehow? Can we?
So when I went through school messenger, so it's going to hit the same people.
And if you're out there and you don't have access to it, you're just going to email someone here in this group, and we're going to make sure that you get it. So thank you. That's really something that this group needs, like right now, as soon as possible. So we'd love your feedback on that.
I could use some of that later on.
Okay, wonderful. We're going to move ahead to present to speak. We heard from our children. We heard from our PTA. We heard from me. Let's find out what other people have to say. If you are present to speak, virtually, you can raise your hand. If you're in person, you can raise your hand in real life. And please state your name and your address for the record, and you will have five minutes to share your thought. And.
You can hit that carrot at the top and.
Anybody here in the room?
To the right. Yeah, right there.
Great. Yeah, looks like Michelle. Would you like to start?
Hi.
Hi there.
I don't know. Can you hear me? It's a little bit. I can't hear anybody.
There you go. That's fair.
Come back to me. You can hear me if somebody could wave. Okay, perfect. Okay, I can't hear you. Um, thank you. I wanted to follow up on last month's discussion around class sizes. I appreciate the parents willing to speak up to support their children. Well, I agree with the support made by Brianna of how critical third grade is to get the support the students need. I need to point out that our current fourth grade is now entering its second year with a class size over forty students, currently forty-one, soon to be forty-two or forty-three later this month. Later, last year, we ended on forty-two while in third grade. While the, where was the consideration last year for our current fourth graders? This is no longer a challenge. It's an equity issue. Over twenty percent of our Wellington district is on IEPs or five oh four plans as last reported. This is creating additional demands in the classroom and on the teachers. Without extra support, instruction is at risk of being diluted, and students are more likely to fail, fall through the cracks. It was mentioned to me by Phil that when class size approaches forty, additional support should be considered. This class has exceeded that threshold now two years in a row, possibly more. Why has an instructional assistant or other support not been added? Has the board reviewed test scores and progress data for this group to ensure that they are not falling behind? When one grade receives support and another, despite equal or greater need, does not, that is an equity. Every child in Wellington deserves the same opportunity for success. I strongly urge the board and administration to act now and provide equity and additional support for the fourth grade. These students should not have another year of being overlooked. I've never heard this class ever being considered for additional support despite the Wellington standards of them being considered a large class size. I hope the administration and board can do right by all Wellington students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, last call. Okay, great. Thank you. You'll have another opportunity there at the end. Moving on to agenda inside of it, we have a communication. This is Michelle Bridgerton, and.
You all about that, right?
Yes, should have been shared about. Right. Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate her participation as always. All right, agenda item eight is the superintendent report. The schools have opened. How'd it go? Sounds great so far.
Between the kids and your comments, you stole a lot of my thunder. So we had a great opening convocation on Monday. We had several school leaders, admin and teachers, provided training on the science of learning, and it's a professional development that draws on cognitive science, neuroscience, psychology, and it really helps staff, teachers, understand how we learn. It sounds simple, but it's, we kind of forget some of those things sometimes. And so we're applying all those things to the practices that we're doing, whether it's CKLA, whether it's math, IAM, whatever it is, the entire staff department. It was part of a conference that we had several people go to in Boston. That was a week-long conference, and they brought it back. And that's going to be one of our themes that we come back to this year. So I think the feedback, and we talked about it today, that was yesterday. Yesterday, it just is, the feedback was really good. People appreciated it, and we'll keep that going. We had all had our meet and greets at both buildings on Wednesday, and as usual, the buildings are packed. It was very well attended. And I think it was exciting to see it. I just, I, I ate the summertime walking through the buildings with furniture in the hallways to clean. I know it's part of the process. You know, cables in the hallways, you're talking about rewiring things today. That just, it's just so exciting to walk back and see faces. And so that was exciting. It was very well attended.
I know this is your report, but I don't want to forget. My kid was way more excited to go back and see his sixth grade people than he was to meet his new seventh.
That's good bonds. That's the bonds we hope for. And then first week in half school was smooth, knock on wood. Students and staff are in the group, which is great. Our sports teams are up and running, pun intended. Cross-country has nine boys and fifteen girls on the last report. Boys soccer has thirteen and girls soccer has seventeen. So for a small school, we have a lot of kids participating. And the good thing about cross-country that's kind of open for us is it's getting some of those fifth and sixth graders who might be smaller, playing against some bigger kids in the middle school for soccer that's harder, they can still do some things. It just depends on where you are maturationally. So that's exciting. The minimum wage piece, we were surprised to hear on, I think I put a change on this because I said this recently. We were surprised to hear from Governor Law on September third that they're increasing minimum wage again. January one twenty-six, it's going to move to sixteen ninety for an hour. That impacts food service, the after-school program, our substitute rates, our West contract that we just negotiated. Things that you just approved are going to come back around again because they have to be reviewed. We will have food service staff that's going to have been here for three years, who will be making ninety-seven cents more than someone that's coming in. That's doesn't, it's ninety-seven cents to me for the few years of, of work is, is like a six percent over two years. It's not, there's no gap. And that's going to be important to address. We're going to have to address the subrates for parent educators. They're under the hourly rate at this point, so that's going to have to go up to at least a hundred and nineteen a day. And we're going to have to look at this, some of the lowest grids on the West contract, which is, and particularly the group that is on the bottom, and that is the custodial group. That bump comes up, and it comes up big enough that it really impacts someone that's been here for five or six years. So in the past, when I bring, when I brought this to you, I brought a proposal. I will do that next meeting. And really, the proposal will be around how do we address not only bumping things up and what the grids look like, but do you want to address and can you afford to address some of those other folks of, of just where they are? Someone who's been here for five years, making just a little bit more than minimum wage. If they go someplace else, they're going to get credit for those five years of service. And those, it's almost like those steps just disappear on the bottom of our scale. So I will bring you a plan for all those positions of what it's going to look like. For the most part, it's not a large group, but it's, it's, it's important. Because I think a lot of places are going to lose people if you don't address it, because they can get that credit someplace else. That makes sense.
What's the current minimum?
So it's like sixteen.
Sixteen thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah. It's not a small amount. It is not a small chunk. Enrollment, as of today, is two hundred and eight students at Center and one sixty-two at Hall. Last month when I reported this, I did not realize in my search that I didn't see all students. So I gave you, I think, I think a significant lower number. I missed all the new students, all the pre-K students, and some of the incoming kindergarten. So we currently have three hundred and seventy students. And that includes all of our new students. That's what we know today, all kindergartens and preschools. And just some quick data about that, our enrollment, and Michelle just mentioned it, we're about twenty percent special ed identified. That's about seventy-two students, plus an additional, we have seven out placements. Seven out placements. That is confirmed. Your budget was for six. Of the students that are identified for special education, thirty-three are at Center and thirty-nine are at Hall. If you don't know, the start times at Center, eight twenty-five to three twenty-five. I'm looking for confirmation because I didn't talk to you guys. And Hall is seven twenty-five to two twenty-five. And then the other piece I was going to share is the bus routes. Is we currently have six bus routes on Hall School side and seven routes for the elementary side. That does not include pre-K, midday. And so when we say we have six and a half buses, that's why. There are six in the morning for Hall and seven for, for Center. One of the drivers from the high school comes to drive for the elementary run, and we also have more students at the elementary school. It's something that I'll continue to evaluate if we can drop a bus in future years because of enrollment. Something we look at, but just some, some data for you to go along with the enrollment.
Since you mentioned bus, I, you know, I'm going to bring this up because I actually had a question about the bus routes, and this is a perfect time to ask you since you brought it up. I don't recall doing this, but I could be wrong. Do we as a board approve bus routes or is that done by M and J?
No, we, we do it. So when we get bus, M and J submits bus routes to us. And then basically, and I'm going to say it's Brianna and Rose, basically go through, one, they make sure Brianna and Rose are the principal secretaries. They go through to make sure every kid is in on a bus route. And we look at times, we look at safety. Typically, it's pretty consistent, simply because it's, it's not like all of a sudden there's a new neighborhood that goes up that has forty kids, right? Relatively consistent. And then once they're done reviewing it, we review it. I had one complaint this year for a drop-off on pickup. Pickup on forty-four. No, it started from a drop-off. It was a drop-off on forty-four. And we just made an adjustment and fixed it. So it's, it's going back to look at routes. So we look at like, is it on a curve? Do they have sidewalks? Most places don't. Now, what's, is it on Route thirty-two or is it on Pine Crest, which is just a dead-end road? We look at all those things. So that's, so it comes through my office and then we give the go-ahead to M and J. You would get, it would become a board issue if there was some, something that I couldn't solve with a family. And then the family said, no, I want the board to hear it. They would, they would come to you. There's a process for it in policy.
Okay. The other thing is, do you ever consider changes to the routes? Like, so if the drivers are noticing something, and they come up to you and they say, hey, you know, I may be more efficient instead of going this way and then backing up, I went this way and went around and, and, and which that around, because I'd have to go to the schools and have to go to you, and that's going to M and J.
Typically goes to M and J, and then Susan, our coordinator, would come, come to me. Sometimes they, like, if it's a parent, it usually comes to me, and then I'll go talk to the coordinator and say, hey, how do we change this? Um we had a couple of years ago, and I'm trying to remember the name of the road. Um dead end road coming up Penny Hill. Um at the stop sign, not to go up at the Hall Hill, but the next stop sign, pass the apartments, is a left turn and it's rich, what is it again? Ridge something, yes. That road turning up because the Steven coming off of the stop sign was hard to get up and and. Um so we look to see if there could be adjustments where someone could walk down. And then so we look at distance, which is in your policy. We'll look at safety again, the dead road or is it Route thirty-two? Look at all those things. Uh and then if we could make a change for safety, we'll probably see that.
Okay, and you're on the double fault.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The admin contract uh is is due July one twenty-six. They have a a new contract. So um we've kind of been going back and forth. Um I met with the negotiations team tonight and so we're closing in on, we're we're getting closer to to a a an agreement. I will say that um I fully expect that in October you'll have. Um a contract to load on. That's my expectation. Uh staffing, so we're, and I hate saying so, just knock on wood. We are in good shape for staffing and and if you saw that report that came out, holy cow, some districts with a hundred openings. How are they functioning? I have no idea. Um the kids knocked this out of the park. At center school, we brought in Chris Jordan. He's the long-term sub for Brian Phillips for PE right now. Uh through, we believe, November first. Uh we brought back Dean Miller as a paraprofessional in preschool. Dean was um. Because the number of pairs we needed, he was the last to the door, so he was released and then someone left. So he was offered the job to come back. That's contractual and he took it. So he's back. I hired Jen Reynolds uh to teach grade three and I have to say this out loud. Jen Reynolds is not the person that that used to own the breakfast shop in town. It is a different Jen Reynolds. Uh she's teaching grade three and it was nice because she actually could start day one, which is great for us. Um and then our our CES night custodian, Dwayne Rowe, just resigned, so he gave us two weeks. And we are posting that position. Might have even gone up today. At HMS, we hired Olivia Rovolino for grade six science and social studies. Uh Olivia was a a para educator, the in the library at at hall. She was completing her teacher certification. Um and so she interviewed and she had the best interview and so we worked with Eastern. Um and she's definitely proven herself in all of her teaching capacities for us, um cuz she was teaching lessons in the library for us. Um and so she she's on for us. Um and then I will be interviewing the candidate to fill that library position, the library para educator position. Um sometime this week. So. In the grand scheme of things, we are doing quite well. I did, I don't know if I mentioned this last time or not. I feel like it's, I hired her a while ago. Um I hired Kelsey Waters for special education at Hall. Um she's being held by our district. She starts later this month, so she'll be coming soon. So from the standpoint of open positions, uh. Two two shortage area positions, I'll call it two and a half and one. Um they're all filled, which is great.
I have a question.
Yes.
So. You say she's getting her certification?
Yep.
Does she have to have it to be a sixth grade science and social studies teacher?
No. So she has a a duration of shortage area permit, a DSAP is what she has. Um she has to have approval from the district and she has to have approval from from her university. She was supposed to student teach with us this year.
Right.
And so now basically what they do is they say. We can leave that student teaching if you're comfortable with it. If she wasn't teaching for us already uh in the library, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with that. But when you have the team interview her, um and she's the best interview with the group. Um and that's the recommendation and all the references check out, I'm comfortable with that.
She's been there for a number of years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And she, we actually convinced her to go back to school. Uh she was not gonna stay. Um and she really enjoyed working with students, uh and convinced her to do her program. Uh and she's almost done with it. And so that's why it's like. It was a fun, but they're being friends.
Okay, but. I'm assuming she wasn't the only person interviewed.
I hope she wasn't.
Correct. So my question is. Is DSAP that she has.
Mm-hmm.
If there are other people that are interviewing that are credentialed, that have had those credentials through traditional means.
Yep.
What makes that a better qualification than somebody that who's been teaching science and social studies for for years for that for that grade? Like I'm just wondering.
So it depends on the pool.
Right.
So.
Okay.
It depends on the pool just and just cuz you have your cert doesn't mean you're gonna be a good fit for us. So you could be teacher of the year and I'm gonna see if I can hire you, right? And she wouldn't be able to compete with that. Um because she has not been teacher of the year, right? She hasn't had fifteen years or whatever it is. So we compare, when you take the pool and you interview them and you ask questions about teaching and learning and you go through the process. That's why it's there for the state. They allow us to take that, those steps if we so choose. Um and it's driven by us if we want it. She was the best candidate of the group. It's a one-year gig. If it's it's not going well, we have every right to step back. Just as we do for anybody, we have things we can do.
So is she going for her cert in science and social studies?
It's the science and social studies cert for on the five, six side is a a generalist. It's a an elementary cert. Pre pre-K six.
So there's no specialty?
No. No.
That position also came about very late in the summer, that vacancy. So aren't. A a pro or a reason why um. That candidate would be a good fit in my mind would be that she already knows our kids, she already knows our routines. She knows what is expected of the staff at the school. So I'm just thinking if I were in that interview room, that's one of the things I would be. Keeping in mind as well.
Okay, I'm just. I'm I'm a bit leery on the whole kind of rush to get cert and then that person is the one who was. Who's the most qualified over any other candidate who was not rushed to get, you know what I mean? Book it, let me book it for my. I'm not a teacher, so. No, I'm just saying, I I I I don't know, okay.
And you could be comparing, I I don't remember the pool, but you could be comparing it to someone that literally just graduated in May. That we don't know. They have their cert, but all they've done is student teaching. That's what she's missed. So far, so that when you're comparing it. Her to other people or candidate to other people, that's what you're looking at. And again, it's about the pool. When you. And I will never, and my admin team knows this about me, don't send me a candidate. That's just to fill a position cuz I won't hire them. They know that. So. When we hired and we're gonna get to it tonight, um budget-wise, you gave me to go ahead, do the third grade, right? It came in higher. If this position was, if Olivia had applied for the same, a different position versus the candidate we hired. I don't think she would have been hired. It just depends on the experience. It depends on the background. It depends on, right? I mean. If John, if I had one year or I just graduated from from server school and you've got fifteen years of server experience, you're not gonna hire Phil Stevens. Unless you're looking to save money. And that's not how I operate. I'm looking to educate kids. I'll hire the best candidate. And that's what we've done in this situation. We've hired, we're taking the best candidate from our pool. Um that we're confident with and moving forward.
Okay, and hold on, one last thing, just to clarify. Um so candidate gets interviewed by a group. At home and then it has to come through you for final.
Correct.
Do you do a separate interview or do you just?
Oh, no, I do a separate interview.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Then so the process is um all applications come to me. I forward any applications for position out to admin. Um if there's something in there I see where I'm like, hey, pay attention, this person looks great or. Red flag, you know, Sam has moved every single year. She's spent an education. What the heck is going on? Red flag. I let them know that. They gather their team of of whoever's gonna be on it. It's typically a UA person, grade level team members. Could be a special education team member. Um they interview. Sometimes they go beyond that and they'll have a model lesson if we have kids around. Sometimes there's a second interview if they are not sure. Um and then from there, they have to check references before anybody gets to me. And references have to back up what they've seen. They know if they get references with red flags. I'm gonna see those references and I'm gonna say, are you sure? Because I don't, I'm not gonna hire her. And then I do a full interview myself. I probably, and I've heard this from candidates, they probably get tired of me in the process because they're sweating in that seat for such a time. But I spend a lot of time with them. I spend an hour interviewing, asking questions. You know, learning about background, um why they wanna come to Wellington, what's special about it, what what they're gonna bring to Wellington. Um and then I'll give them a tour. I introduce them to the HR department. Obviously, I'm gonna do those things if I offer them a job. If I was uncomfortable then, then I'd actually send them away. They know that I hire. They don't, they recommend.
The one, one other point, um in her role in the library, she was sort of mentored, if I'm not mistaken, by Amy. Reading, the library coordinator. So she that she almost served as a cooperating teacher, student teaching kind of a role. My, am I right, ladies?
Yeah.
So I think that um makes me feel comfortable that.
Yeah.
And and I would just say. Forgive me for speaking out of turn, but I would just say that experience in the library. Um was so significant that that is really what would have moved her above a candidate who had only had. The student teaching experience. They may have had the certification, but comparatively less actual classroom experience. And significantly less experience in Wellington specifically. Um with our specific students and and knowing our community and being able to collaborate with our staff.
Our model for the the, because of a para educator contractually, and I believe legally too, cannot teach. Without, like they can't plan. So Amy plans all the lessons. Amy would model for the first group. She would do the lesson. Olivia would watch it. The same thing will happen with a new person coming in. Then, once they're comfortable with it, they will then implement with the other classes. Amy will support as needed. It's it's, you know, whatever's going on, principal will support. Um and that's the model we implement. So yes, there's a lot of mentoring going on. You're seeing how the lesson is implemented first. Again, it's. Quite frankly, I think it's better than student teaching, um because it's longer. She's been at it longer. We, uh of my philosophy, sorry if I'm getting on my soapbox here, but um. I've talked to you about reading cla- reading classes and how universities, in my opinion, don't provide enough reading. Uh instruction to students coming out with teacher certification. They have one or two classes and are expected to be an expert. I think that's just dead wrong. Um I see student teaching is the same thing. Um I think the more time you're actually in classes, in classrooms, teaching, working with kids, the better. What what they do in twelve weeks. You're green. When when you own your own class, it's so different. So it's it's um. She's she's prepared and I'm confident she's gonna do a great job. Um and it's gonna be.
And I would say, I've actually seen in in the sixth grade team meetings. He brings a very valuable perspective because she taught them all as fifth graders. Um so whereas the other sixth grade teachers are learning about them as new students, new to them as sixth graders. She's got some historical perspective on who they are as learners and who they are as kids and. Um how they interact, most appropriately, peer-to-peer conflict, that sort of thing. So she is able to bring that to the team. Um and because she's got those strong working relationships already with the her colleagues, she's able to. Voice her opinions where I I think a lot of the the um. Younger staff members that we're interviewing may not have that level of confidence to be able to. Speak their mind and advocate for kids in a way that I'm already seeing Ms. Rovolino do um with the team.
Yeah, no, I'm done. I have some more. I'm still going. I know it's fast, so did this, cuz isn't it right now getting posted externally?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so on that.
Applications came in, yeah.
Okay, so on that, on the posting, you have on there that they have to be certified and whatever they're like. So you you have, this is a general bicycle elementary cert then.
It's a, it's an elementary cert.
Okay.
Yes.
But that DSAP covers that? So, okay, so that's already out out there. And I'm just gonna put you on the spot for a minute here, cuz you use the word significant when talking about. Being a library assistant, transitioning over to a sixth grade science and social studies classroom. That doesn't connect for me. Can you fill in that gap?
Oh, so in our library, to to Mr. Stevens' point, um Mrs. Reading, Amy, our library media specialist. Is working to plan the lessons. Ms. Rovolino is delivering. Five of those six lessons each week. Um she is doing that under the guide, she had been doing that under the guidance of. A colleague, a mentor. But she's the one in the classroom delivering the instruction. She's the one creating the displays in the library. That bring children into the library. She's the one creating the connections with children outside of the library that. Make them trust her and feel that they can share with her their academic struggles, their social emotional struggles. Those are the things that, those are the qualities that make somebody a really great teacher. Content. For sure is important. It always is important. And Ms. Rovolino has strong content background. You also can't teach somebody those things that she's demonstrated in and out of our classrooms that that she's got. Um and frankly, things that I wouldn't necessarily. Somebody who hadn't had that experience wouldn't have been able to develop with our school community.
She also, there's one, a- and. I'm trying to figure out how I say this without throwing somebody under the bus. We had books in the library that hadn't been checked out in eighteen years. And Olivia, when she came in day one, started going through the entire collection. And she knows what's there. I mean, we got rid of books that were like. You know, see Spot Run? I mean, not like, not the normal level, but you get my point, like.
Yeah.
They've been around and when students haven't checked them out for eighteen, twenty years. They don't, you need to go through your, what you have for books. And so we moved a lot of books out and if you look at the shelves now, like there's, you can see the face of a book. She knows what's in there and the great thing about that now, she's got the connection for science and social so- social studies and ELA. And so she can go and say, hey, we can insert this book if we need an an additional resource. She has that knowledge. Um that's gonna be, it's a real benefit to us at this point. Keep going. All right, so the boiler update. I wish I had more here. Um we met with another company, uh we got a quote for repair. Um and Steve, building maintenance supervisor, had some questions on the quote. It was eleven thousand dollars. Um he has reached out to them and is waiting for a response. Uh there's two things. So one is there's pressure testing in the quote. Um and then the second thing is to replace the oil lines. Um I s- no one still is confirmed what this. The issue is, that's why this testing has to be done. Um we just wanna make sure that if we're gonna, whatever the fix is, is it's gonna be a fix. Um and that's where Pete, Steve is talking to them. Um I know someone was on vacation, we've gone back and forth to church playing phone tag. So at some point, we're gonna have to make a move. Um eating season is coming quick. You don't have eleven thousand dollars in your budget to just fix a. Um a boiler or two boilers. Um I'm gonna have to make that move. Um I'm not gonna get other quotes because there's nobody, if we have a sixty thousand dollar quote, it's just not comparable. Um the biggest issue right now is how is air getting in the line? There's questions of, is the line too thick? Is the line too long? Is there air getting in someplace? I will say, and Sam, you can chime in on this if you want, because you're the expert in this too. Um. Um whatever it is. This is the most confident I've I've felt trying to get to the fix. Um I didn't see the sixty thousand dollar, I'm gonna call repair. I saw that still as a patch. Um because it's just drawing oil into the room and there's still to be air bubbles. It's just then not getting air bubbles from the tank in the. Boiler room into the boiler. Um we wanna fix it, right? I don't know if you wanna add anything to that.
How much do you want me to add to it? Just kind of like explain what we saw when we came.
Yeah, I mean, you should, you should explain kind of the background of it.
Okay, yeah, so I came with the guy when he came to look at it and see what was going on and talked to Phil and the maintenance guy. And the rep from EMCOR, who does the service contract. And the rep from EMCOR, who does the service contract, but there wasn't a rep from the tank company. So basically, what it seems like is going on is there, you have an oil tank outside that's buried under the ground, and there's. Supply, there's like three supply lines that come up through the ground into the building that provide oil to the two boilers. And then the water heaters also ran out of oil. There's one return. All the returns go together and return the oil back. It just makes like a big loop pretty much. So the issue is that it seems like there is air getting into the lines that are supplying the oil to the. Um, boilers, which cause it to pretty much flutter and go off or. Whatever maintenance terms for that. The water heater is fine. The. I haven't seen the quote that you got sent, so I'm not sure exactly what the questions are, if I could try to. Explain what the thought process was of the service tech who went out there and the procedure that they were going to do because. Matt? Steve, the maintenance guy? Okay. Steve had said that when he ran his own lines, because he just ran some soft copper lines to the oil tank. And didn't use the existing lines, he got the boiler to run and it went all the way into high fire. So it's a modulating boiler. That changes intensity based on the load, so it can go low fire, medium, high, whatever, just low and high. The issue too is that it would never crank up into high fire, which we need, what if we don't have, especially since you're only running off of one boiler, you have. Boiler number one and boiler number two, and they kind of work together or lead lag or whatever you wanna call it that. When you're really cold and you're cranking, you need both at the same time. If you're running on one, you need one at full capacity to make up that load for whatever the building's calling for. So when he ran his own line over to the tank, he got it to go full steam ahead. So that's why there's either problems with the lines. Supposedly, the oil people who did the tank came out and pressurized the lines and said that they were good. The service tech thinks the first step is that on the top of the tank, there's ports. That the lines go into, so he wants to take that port out and check to see there's a certain type of valve, I think it's called a foot valve. In the tank that could be. Um, not opening all the way and letting a little bit of burp go in there, it's called, a little burp of get air go into it, just. You know, down the line into the tank, so he would have to come out. I think that would be the first step. And for whatever reason, that's fine, and it's just a mystery. We're saying screw the existing lines. We're gonna snake. Cause the existing lines, I believe, are one inch or three quarter. They're three quarter, and when Steve had ran his own line, he ran just like a little small three eighths line or something. So, based on the math, we could fish a smaller line. Through the existing lines, and it would be enough to support the load that you need for those three appliances, the two boilers. And just redo it ourselves. We wouldn't have to dig anything up. You're using the existing line as a conduit to protect that soft copper going through, which would save. The money of having to dig everything up. We already know that it can handle it, cause he would fish a bigger line than what Steve had kind of like experimented with. So that's the second part, if he doesn't see anything obvious with the um, foot valve.
So I think the quote is, is that, the question around the quote was. If you don't see the, if, if there's, it was like A and B, but it was, you're doing both. And you might not need to do B.
Oh, did he do it like a lump sum instead of? Did it say not to exceed?
I think it said, uh, forty-five hundred, sixty-five hundred, or something like that, for eleven total. Forty-five hundred was the pressurizing and testing the lines to see if there's air. It is the foot valve. Um, and then. If that can't be fixed, then running the lines would be the additional chunk of change.
So what's the question?
That we wanted to confirm. You might have just answered the question.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
I wanna make sure it's like, if needed, the sixty-five hundred dollars is if needed, cause if. The, it is the foot valve.
Yeah, that's how I thought, and when I talked to, um. The estimator about it, I believe that that's how Adam, the guy who came out, explained it to him, like this is plan A, this is plan B.
Right, and one is plan C altogether is everything, and I think that's just his max price, just in case. That's the eleven thousand I'm talking about.
Hopefully it's just the. Four, but.
Is the sixty-five putting the tube through?
The lines. Yeah, and I, I mean. EMCOR doesn't, right, and EMCOR won't touch the oil tank. So it's not that, a- a- and it's just different vendors will do different work, so. But we need this, this solved. This, this needs to be done. So.
Yeah, I can't imagine that if he, it was the foot valve would be like, oh, I'm still gonna charge you eleven thousand dollars. I don't.
Yeah, and I didn't know if, if, even if. Why wouldn't we just run the line, Sam? Why wouldn't we just go, let's run the three lines and just not do the pressure testing?
We still need the valves to work.
Well, I'm not sure. Um, yeah, I'm not sure if you need it in tandem. If you wanna just be like, oh, well, screw testing it. I don't know if you ran those lines if, if that bad valve still would.
Have an issue.
I don't know enough about it to answer that question.
So that's what we're.
But I'll give them a little push.
That was the Steve, uh, contacting him to, to try and get more information. But again, my point is the money, depending on whether it's four, six, or eleven. That's not in our dollars. That's not, remember those dollars we cut? There it is, right? So that would be one things that, something you would pay for now. And then you'd be looking for reimbursement, you'd be going to town meeting, requesting the selectmen to call town meeting to access the school repair funds. To cover that cost.
You also can't afford to miss school. Neither, neither boilers are really working correctly right now, so it's not like you even have a backup.
Which school this is hall?
Right. So the backup was the older boiler hall, and now. It's having the same problem as the other boiler, and it was been, a motor was replaced, and so there's a lot of moving parts to this. But it was like, is the, is the motor?
I have a question. At the last town meeting, we changed the law, bylaws, whatever they are, the policies. So that when the board of selectmen, um, put something out to bid, it's a higher amount now. Five thousand, we have a separate policy. Okay. Okay, very good, thank you.
So are you asking because it came in at eleven, would we have to get three quotes?
The way your policy works is like you do your best to get the quotes. But if you call vendors and you can show that you've contacted vendors and you're not getting responses, because some vendors don't wanna deal with things. You have your quote. Sometimes a vendor will just not wanna deal with you and will say, it's four hundred thousand dollars. I like, I'm exaggerating, but sometimes they'll just come in and say, well, that'll make worth my while. But, um, I mean, EMCOR has looked at this, Service Station has looked at this, Homestead has looked at this, like there's numerous companies. That have looked at this issue now and trying to solve it. Um, the vendor from. That EMCOR brought in that was, had an alternate solution. We're trying to find the correct solution that is the least amount of money. That's what we're trying to do.
And I just wanted to say to you, I'm not, this is not my company. I'm not personally benefiting from any of this. I'm not getting any commission off of coordinating any of this. I'm just doing it. As a liaison because I know a little bit about it, cause this is my field, so I just wanna be clear of that.
And we did review the policy, just so you know that, but like, we talked about what the policy was, she's not getting anything from it. It's the vendor. That, uh, and, and you know a lot, don't short treat yourself on that. Um, but the, uh. Like the boiler whisperer is kind of, well, I'll say who you brought in. Um, and that's what we need right now, which needs to be resolved. So, all right.
Thankful for it because.
Yeah, I'm trying to like. Yeah, no problem.
We were out there in the rain trying to lift that thing up.
Speaking of the rain, can I ask one more question about your list? How is the grass coming along your fall?
Uh, it's, it's actually to the student's performance for doing this, and that, I'll do my other now, but it's, and then do student performance. The grass is coming in great. The big shout outs and fire guys, Alex Moore, who has been dragging hoses out there and spraying that field. Um, with our department, um, huge help. Um, it's Steve pulling the hoses, like it was really, really a team, a team effort. Um, again, we're staying off of it. Um, they had to carry the goal, soccer goal off of the field and put it to the lower field. They did it, uh, but it's, it's coming in great. And then, uh, randomly. Uh, on the same note, uh, the bleachers that are there on the softball field, the top step was broken. And Rachel Goff had contacted the, the, uh, the director, the record director was contacted by FedEx. They have bleachers they're getting rid of that are in great condition. That happened to be the royal blue tops that are the color of Hall School. Um, and she said, do you want one? Eh, absolutely. So she's taking two to River Road and we're, um, getting one, I believe tomorrow. Um, and it's gonna replace those broken ones at Hall, so that'll be up there too, so, uh, excited, so.
If you're on other, I did have a question for other. So, uh. Since we know clean market this year, we were going through and getting rid of some of my daughter, my daughter's old, you know. Comic books and stuff to touch or touch two pages out of. Yeah, it got me to thinking that if there would be any use for the schools for if parents were cleaning things out, like books, coloring books, markers, crayons, any of that kind of stuff. To donate to the school if they need them. I just don't know how much you need them, so that's why I wanted to run it. Pass first, like, is this a good idea to have, you know, parents have extra things that have a, you know, drive for it, or if you're set up already, you don't need it.
Somebody asked me this weekend, and I was like, yeah, absolutely. I put things in the staff lounge with a big sign that says free. Usually an hour later I go and it's gone.
Yeah, cause she had my, she's got these little like magnetic, uh, letters. Might be good for a pen, I might be like, perfect. But I just didn't want to, I didn't wanna encourage families in town to start bringing. You're not gonna have a use for them, or if they're not in great shape, but if I, I, I think if they're good, if you.
I think too, if someone wants to send a picture to Lisa, you can probably make a judgment. I'm not leaving you out, Alicia, because I'm typically in that middle school stuff, but. You know, thinking indoor recess coloring books, things like that, if you took a picture and just sent it to. To Elle Cushing at Wilmington City at work, she can look at it and go, yeah, bring that box in, I'll definitely take it and people will use it. I think that's an easy way to do it.
Retired teacher who came in last year with like five giant pots, amazing things, and it was gone by the end of the day.
The other thing too is the after-school program, do they?
Yeah, both. They have fun materials. Yeah, yeah. All right, so, um, the student performance review tonight is, uh, Sback, it's NGSS, it's the finance and I ready. Um, we had done that separate night prior to this, but now that we're looking at data on a regular basis. I just inserted it and, uh, thought of this, I mean, because we can actually show you the results now. So the admin team is here to help out. Um, Marsha is like cheering for us tonight. And the reason for that is, uh, and our talking. Um, through this the other day is that we're gonna, we're asking Marsha to do a presentation for you on, um, tier supports. Supports. Um, and so that'll be a future meeting. Uh, and really, it's just gonna be around what we provide for intervention for tier two, for tier three. What does it look like? How's it different from special education? She'll pull together that, um, presentation for us, and that'll be what she'll own, and then Lisa and Alicia will probably cheer for her. So let me just pull this up. All right, so. This is, um, and, and we shortened some of this just to give you data because we've been doing this more often now, but. This is basically just, you know, we've been reviewing a wide variety of data over the last year. Um, this is a list of some of the things that we look at, that we review. I've told you, we review a lot of data. Um, and so tonight is really about Sback scores, I ready scores and NGSS, um, and what's been released, so. I'm gonna start with math, and whoever wants to start first over there.
So when we look at the, these scores, what you're looking at, um, for the percentages is. Students who scored at a level of three out of four, um, three reading expectation for is exceeding three or four. Um, you can see that, that if this is organized sort of by, um, cohort, so if you look across, you can. Um, you're comparing the same general cohort of kids, though obviously there are additions and. Kids who moved out of districts, so it's not exactly the same. Um, but you can see that in math, with the exception, um. No, actually at all grades, we, we did have an increase, um, at Hall with some more modest than others. Um, but we are looking at some growth there for math.
All right, so in Connecticut, students take Sback for the first time in third grade. Um, despite students taking short practice tests called I, IAB's interim assessment block. Uh, to familiarize themselves with Sback, students in both third and fourth grade still struggled on Sback. So we're looking for a good increase in grade three and four scores next spring in twenty-five, twenty-six. Towards that end, we're implementing new wind blocks decorated, uh, de- decorated, dedicated to math this year to support those skills. Uh, measured on Sback. And of course, the Connecticut State Department of Education continues to emphasize. Growth scores over percentages, uh, but we know we have some work to do here.
So I'm just gonna say that we're trying to get students, so it's that continuum, you know, where they are by the time they leave us. Every fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, it's the highest they've scored in any year they've taken Sback. I'm not trying to throw someone under the bus, I'm just telling you what the facts are. This sixth, seventh, and eighth graders scored the highest in math that, and of any year for meeting expectations. Is it? Outstanding yet? Or no? It's not, but it's, that's movement. When you go to the ELA.
So a decrease in the percentage of fourth grade performing on or above grade level was evident in these scores. A large percentage of students in that group that did not meet grade level expectations are receiving tier, tier three support. Or are identified as, um, special needs. Several students just barely missed the cutoff. To be considered proficient, so Phil did go over these scores very thoroughly, and there were several students that were on that cusp. So they're technically labeled as a level two, but they, they just missed for a level three, which would be that, uh, on grade level.
And when we look, um, at the scores at Hall, um, obviously I can't get no credit for this, but, um. Really significant gains in the language arts, um, on the language arts test across grade levels. Um, so very exciting to see that growth. We're hoping to continue to see. That level of growth moving into, uh, this year.
And again, the highest that they've been at any year in middle school. If you look at just across that, and again, Alicia said it, it's not necessarily cohort, it's just that, you know. They've tested, so Sam, just for, uh, non-school people here, if, if I'm looking at the sixth grade, this is when they were in grade three. This is when they were in grade four, grade five, and then how they tested in grade six. So when we see twenty percent jumps, that's a significant jump. This group was, the middle school was between ten and twenty percent increase, which is a big jump.
How do you explain the fourth grade that went from forty-four down to twenty-five?
So that is one of the things that Lisa said, was we had, and being small matters. So when you have three or four kids that were missed their scale score by. One to ten points, um, and one to ten points on a two thousand point scale, um, that's how close they were to a three.
Does that have anything to do with, uh, class sizes that Ms. Shell was talking about before?
Could be a thousand things. So when we.
Keep in mind, these kids are in fifth grade now.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time figuring out.
Look at, so the kids that you're looking at, who were in grade four at the last spring, are now in fifth grade at Hall. So the kids in, in question that you're referencing are the kids who thirty-eight percent of, of students scored. At or above a level three.
Which is the current fourth grade.
Right, right. So we don't have a score yet.
That's, that's interesting, yeah, that's.
The other, the other piece to that, uh, two parts. One is when you look at that, um, the current fifth graders, even though it says grade four, that's where they were last year, where they scored. Um, when you look at that group and we talk. Um, when you look at that group and we talk about scale score, we also go through the list of kids. We're small enough where we go, okay, we have thirty two kids in that grade level. Let's just go through. And they go, oh, wow. Brianna outperformed. What we expected based upon what other data we have. And underperformed. Anne must have taken a nap because she's came out as a one. When we expected Anne to be the highest of four. We're able to go through each kid and look at their score and go. Ooh, what happened here? Um, and there's a couple longer that. I mean. They knew the kids better than I do, but I can look at them and go, oh, the world, like, that's a high flyer. That's part of that mix. The other piece is when we look at that, which is. Dibbles data was that.
I was just gonna say, yeah. Yeah, no. So it was interesting to me because Phil and I had this conversation. Uh, uh, a couple of times throughout the year, because if I compare their S back scores to their Dibbles scores, they're very different and. We're in a better position now where we're sharing that out with you more frequently from the beginning of the year, the middle of the year and the end of the year. The Dibble scores for that group are very different than what it looks like here.
Much better?
Much better, yes. Like shockingly better than what we see here. So, you know, uh, we come back to this is. One measurement, this is something that they take once a year. Unfamiliar, I mean, there's, there's a million different. Factors, but. It it is interesting to me that if I compare their their. Dibble scores, they're much better than this S back E L A score. What would indicate?
I know we didn't get to I ready yet. Oh, are we gonna, we can talk about that when you get to it.
But remember, there's no I ready. We, we dropped that I ready E L A last year. There's no comparison to it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, and share second. So the, they talked about Lisa mentioned the growth and so the the state looks, the the growth model. The state measures growth by looking at two main stats and that's growth rate and the percentage of target achieved. Um, we're gonna start with percentage of target achieved. So this is a a demo comparison. Of three different students, student A, B and C. And based on the scores, you can see, and it's just an old example from their nineteen, twenty, you can see their scales score. The state identify identifies their target growth for the next year. So. This student A was uh their scale score was two thousand four hundred and twenty and their target growth was sixty nine. So depending on where you fall, they create that targeted growth score. Um. And then basically what happens is the percentage of to- that target that they achieved is that's what that is. Um, this example also shows that student C. Um, who may have the highest scale score, uh, they they may have a score of a four, which is the highest. Um, they show the least amount of growth. They only made ten percent of the growth. They were supposed to grow forty nine points. And then we had five. That's something the state's looking at too. And what we saw, and I saw this actually in some of the. The middle school, some of our high flyers in the middle school in the eighth grade, their growth, they scored fours. But their growth was lower. Um, and that actually. Hurts you as well, just as much as your. Your, what your aspect score is, when they do your, your, you know. Overall achievement and looking at growth together. That you could penalize to that as well.
So that reflects in the percentages we see.
So it's not in the percentage of achievement. When you get to uh and they're not, they're not out yet. You remember like they get the physical fitness scores, they look at truancy. They have all these scores that they put numbers on and then you give an, you get an overall score for your district. There's a growth score. And if the students that are the high flyers don't show their growth. You get, that's where you get penalized in that. It's just they don't, I don't know why they don't publish it right away. But they don't. It's not in the twenty four, twenty five data yet.
Yeah, but the trade off on that is you're a high flyer, they're gonna influence your percentages here.
Oh, correct.
They're, so.
Get here, but you're up here.
The things you can point to. Here you.
You are here and here.
Right, right. It's tough to say that, you know, we're not, we're not performing on growth, but. Then not immediately point to we're not performing on growth. Yes, we have so many high performers, they really can't grow. Look at these numbers, you know what I mean? So.
The state says, hey, if if even if you're a high flyer, we still want you to grow your forty nine points.
I get that.
And so they want you to do, which is fine. I I like push every kid as far as we can get them, right? That's the point of it. Um, this doesn't show that. So when you, um. When you look at this, this is basically how they do the growth targets. So they have a chart that it has the growth target on it. It, whatever your score was from last year, if you look at that lower red shaded area for that grade six student. Um. You can see that the state identified a growth target of fifty three points. Based upon that student's fit scale score. So. That's what they expect them to grow the fun the next year is fifty three points. Uh, and you can see they two level two approaching this. It's like depending on where you are, you are in your scale scores, how many points you're supposed to grow the next year. Um. The students that are have higher scales, scale scores. Have a smaller amount of growth that they need to show. The students with lower scaled scores. Need to show them more, show more growth. Which makes sense, right?
Yeah.
So then what does our growth look like? So that's what this is.
Alright, that's me. So if you look at the blue bar on this graph, uh, you can see the gradual growth of central school students in E L A over time. So we grew from fifty seven point one in twenty two, twenty three to seventy one point six in twenty three, twenty four. To an another small growth spur to seventy four point three and twenty four, twenty five. So but keep in mind, this is the average percentage of the growth achieved by all students that took it. Um. Not the percentage of students who achieved their target. So in math, the percentage of growth was sixty six point two. And twenty two, twenty three. That increased to seventy three point two in twenty three, twenty four and then dipped a little bit back down to sixty six point two. This past spring. So we had a little bit of a roller coaster, little ups and downs, but still. Above the state average, which to me is is. Significant.
It's another comparison too. So when you think about where the math scores were. The achievement scores versus this. The math scores looked like if they were higher than the reading and then you look at this and like, oh, we didn't grow as much. But then the reading scores for them were lower. But the growth was higher. So it's, those are the things that why they're looking at the growth model, because it it matters.
Are. The tests that we're looking at, were they all the same tests or did this test change at some point during um these years?
Now, they, it's the same.
Pretty much.
So we're comparing apples to apples.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You're you're.
So this is the H M S. It's an adaptive test though, right? It's just one type, I don't need this one within a year. Both that, I believe it's within a year.
Yeah, that's bad.
And so the passages would change. So if you're looking at a a a reading uh assessment. The passages will change, but the level of difficulty of the questions doesn't, right? It adapts to the student, but if you're comparing a fourth grade test. You're comparing. The same from year to year.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, for math, um, you can see that that, um, sorry. For E L A, you can see that it's been, um. Incremental growth over time. Uh, we're seeing very. Small growth. I suspect that we will start to see some of those larger groups as the groups that were at centers up to us, um, knowing that those groups have had. Significant growth. Um, when we look at math. You can see that um we're continuing to grow and again, um, to to Lisa's point. Still pretty significantly above the state average. And for science, so our science assessment, this is taken by kids in grades five, eight and eleven, though obviously eleven doesn't apply to us here. Um, and you can see.
Can I just ask you a question? I'm so sorry before you move on from the S fashion. Um. And I don't actually know who this is directed to, so I'll just ask everybody, um. When, so the growth part of. Uh, going from year to year and the state wants to see a certain uh number of growth. How do we make that happen? Like, is it? Do we teach them to take the test better? Do we help help them to understand what to expect better? Like, I'm trying to understand. What? What the growth would be from year to year? Like, is it?
Yes, that's the asking.
It's, it's all of that, yeah.
Right.
All, all those.
One thing.
Right. And and unfortunately, sometimes the way that the questions are asked. Um. Can be pretty confusing for a kid. Um, so the process of teaching kids to. Do well on the test is sometimes counterintuitive. Obviously, we still have to do that, right? We have to teach them how to score. How to achieve on the assessment that they'll be given. Um, also recognizing that sometimes. You, these aren't necessarily the questions that you'll be facing in, say, high school or college. They're not gonna work these questions this way.
Our programs, though, we picked C K L A and I M because they were more closely aligned to the types of questions, how they're asking questions, and types of things they have to do. They're gonna be exposed to that more and more. Exposing them to the the interim assessment, there was a reason we did that. Because some of the computer things that you have to do, um. Would drive me absolutely wild. I I would wanna. Take it off the screen and put it on paper and write things down and make notes. It's on your computer. So we have, we give kids time to actually go through the problems and see what it looks like. They can do practice tests for that purpose. Um. But it's all of the above. And remember. Jen might have woken up on the wrong side of the bed on Monday and you walk into your S back on Monday morning. And we can't control that. Right? We're trying to control as much as we can. Um. For kids to perform is, is, this is one picture, one piece of data. What's it look like compared to everyone? It's a data, that's all we.
Yeah, I think the the framing of it is really important. Um, and I appreciate the. Comment Lisa that you made about the dibbles and the comparison of those two things. Um. So I, thank you. I appreciate that.
Alright, back to science.
Back to science. Um, okay, so, um, if you, um, so again, the science assessment is taken in grades. Five, eight and eleven. Um, so the problem is with those few data points, it is hard to do a cohort analysis. Especially thinking about the fact that between fifth and eighth. Many kids could have transferred in, transferred out. So we may not be looking at exactly the same group of students, but. You can see that, um, for example, the the yellow highlights, that's compared, that is comparing kids who are in grade five during. Twenty. Twenty to twenty twenty one. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then uh to twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. Um, slight increase. Little bit of a decrease when we compare this past year's eighth graders as to where they were in fifth grade. Again. Hard to say for sure. We're such a small community that a couple of kids moving in or out, um. Could. Explain that that decrease or increase.
So this is the um, the I ready data. And this is the last. This is the last year that you're gonna see this. Um. And again, this looks all the way across the second to third to fourth to fifth, if they've taken it multiple years, you can see that all the way across. And the idea here is that the green column at the end of each year, you want that to be significantly higher each year. Right? And so if I just track the, um, the grade two group across. This group right here. You're looking at fifty two percent were at goal, fifty three percent, forty seven, fifty eight, sixty two. Um. We were using this really as a kind of a predictor to S back and it didn't turn out necessarily that way. Um, and some of the questions that we thought were going to be good practice for S back. Turned out to just be kinda. Um. Not as useful. Or time wise as we thought. So. This is the last time you see this, the I ready math is going away. Um, and. That's being adjusted. But again, you can see the. The purpose of it. And the the. Twenty four, twenty five data. You know, you you look at the forty one to fifty six, the forty six to fifty six, you wanna see less kids in red, the intervention. Um, those are things you wanna see.
Okay, um, so when we look at the typical and stretch growth as measured by the um I ready for math. You can see that, um, with, um, one exception being fourth grade, most of our students were. Exceeding the expected growth of one hundred percent, um, at some by pretty notable, um. Increases in in eighth grade specifically and sixth grade. Um, but we are looking for ex- expected growth of one hundred percent.
Alright, I am here to talk to you about stretch growth already. So, uh, that's the growth that's recommended for below grade level students to reach proficiency. And for students on grade level to reach advanced proficiency. So students who are further behind have larger growth benchmarks in order to catch up to their grade level peers. Which takes most students more than one year to be considered on grade level. So here in Wellington, an average of twenty nine percent of students reached their stretch growth last year. Which is on target for I ready's suggested estimate of twenty five to thirty five percent of students who've reached their aspirational growth. So that is actually up from years past. Twenty nine percent right in the middle of what I ready recommends for um students' strength growth.
And then the last thing we have on here is not much of this has changed because we have an actual plan of multi-year. Um. You know, we've invested in core programs, we've invested in intervention programs. Uh, there's consistency uh in our programming throughout elementary and middle school. Uh, which is good. Uh, and I think the, and I shared that the. Dibble celebration with you with the kindergarten group, like, look at things that we expect to see going through. Um. Obviously, the professional development, we're looking at, you know, keeping that going and and providing supportive assistance. Lisa has a new uh block at hall. Alicia's already evaluating her schedule, questioning things and going. You know, how can we make this better? That's something we will address in the future. Um. But. I think the bottom line is there are some wins in this data. There's also, you know, and even though it's a win showing up of ten, fifteen percent increase. There's also some things in here that are just, we need to make sure we address. We know that. Um, and uh, so we're gonna celebrate the wins and just regroup and make sure we keep those wins going. And then make sure we're addressing where we see those drops, particularly in that, um. There's a, the group at, um, the fifth grade size right now. Um, that we have some concerns about. Um, just making sure that they're making the growth. So that's where we pull data out more. And go, okay, even though you see the percentage of twenty five percent for the L A for them. What would their, what did their growth look like? Cause they might have grown and we just literally just talked about this in admin. I threw an article at them. Um, and it was about students, how long it takes students to catch up. And when they do it. And you have to average one point three years of growth to be able to catch up by a certain, you know, depending on how how far behind you are. But. You know, after three years, you've got four years of learning and that's our goal. So you don't catch up in one year typically. It takes time. But. That's what we're driving towards. So.
And we're keeping a special eye on the current fourth grade.
I. But I will say we keep a special eye on every.
Everyone, yeah.
No grade level that we don't watch all of their data. Um. And. Understand why. And the what. So why are they performing the way they're performing? And the what is like, on what assessment? Um, is it consistent? Do we see Phil takes four assessments for E L A? Is there consistency in my scores? Did I miss one? Um, you know, where are the holes and and how do we fill those things in? So we do that for every group.
I have a question too. Um, based on individual student scores, um, having just gotten S back scores in the mail. Um. Like, that's information that I have that was sent to me. So if I were to reach out to the teacher. Um, what? Like, what specific, what student specific things? Would that score lead to? Or is it just the?
Potentially not. It's, it's.
I, I understand that. So.
Yeah.
So, but the immediate, what, to me. Look would be at all the other stuff, like, is. Is this area, right? Is this area consistent, like you just said, with the other? Scores? And that would certainly be a question that I would have and do have by the time, um, about. Uh, the S back score, so.
We, we would take all that and look at for every kid, what are their curriculum assessments look like? What are their? You know, what does their S back look like? What are, and if they're doing intervention, what are their scores like in intervention? We would look at that as in a comprehensive view. And say, yeah, they performed where we expected them to perform. We have to keep going or hmm, they missed out. Right? Jen got up late that day. What happened? We wanna know those things since. It's, that's the great thing about being small. Sometimes you can find out.
Um.
You know, when I got out of. But that's also why it's really important for us to triangulate, so so to speak, the data. So we're, we're looking at one data point. So. But that's also why it's really important for us to triangulate, sort of, so to speak, the data. So we're, we're looking at one data point. So to Phil's point, right? We wanna look at homework assignments and, uh, unit assessments and how those students are performing in class and. You know, all these different things. It's, it's not one little snapshot, it's a big picture. And so we're really, really lucky to be in such a small district, so we can know each of our students individually, who they are as a learner. And I think what's nice about the S back report is that it does tell you what standards, like it drills down and. You know, while your student may need help in, you know, fractions or decimals or whatever the case may be. And so then, you know, you have a better picture of what's going on. And those are the kinds of things that you can speak to. Like, oh, you know, do, do we need more practice in this? Do we need more intervention, less intervention, whatever the case may be? So I, I think that's the most helpful piece.
So as, as a parent, I would ask that question to the teacher, like, these are the sections that. He or she seems to perform less well in, and these are the things that we should.
What are your thoughts on?
Right, yeah, yeah.
We have other data.
And you're going into parakeet your confidence, students, so. But keep in mind too, this is old data, so this was back in May, so we're September.
The, the staff have gathering data all of the time. So I know, um, at Hall. Our interventionists have been working with our grade level teams since, since before the first day of school. And we've got the smarter balanced data along with their intervention data from last year, if applicable. Along with their I ready data and they, all of that, and they're making plans about how much intervention kids need. And does it make sense that it would be in this setting or that setting? Um, because we're small, they can make those decisions kind of on a one-on-one. Basis for every kid, um, and, and they may be able to even. Drill it down to the point where they could say, well, you three all need work on fractions. So we're gonna make sure that you're in the same intervention group, right? Um, whereas as maybe you three need a different type of support. So they're able to do that and I'm seeing them do that. I mean. Literally every day since, since they've been back from summer.
And I'll talk more about that too, when, talk about the NTSS and our kind of progression. Of how we support students through the process, you know, leading from this tier one all the way up to special education. So I'll get into more detail on that too. That's for the next time.
Yeah. Jen, one thing they haven't said, and I think this has been Arthur's push for a long time, um, is trying, and you asked this, um. And then I'll put them on the spot here because we just talked about this in admin, is how parents can support. Making sure parents know what they can do at home if they have the ability to do something at home. It's our, our job to educate kids. But if we have a parent that wants to support and do something at home, what are we giving them? What are we providing? In conversation, we had a robust conversation the other day about, uh, curriculum. Uh, and whether it's open house, curriculum night, and there was a third name for it. Something else.
Family night.
Family night. Uh, and, uh, we were talking about what happens at curriculum night and what. Kind of coming together on what our expectations are for that night. Um, and there were four things. Those four things were.
Rules and routines.
Yeah, um.
It's discussing rules and routines.
Curriculum.
And curriculum in there, so it's standards knowing.
What your parents did.
Support at home.
Yep.
And.
And your baby.
An, an opportunity for kids to teach their parents what they've learned in the classroom.
So.
Reading and math.
Looking at something different instead of the teacher in the front of the show doing that, they convinced me of that because I really. Want people to understand the curriculum portion of it, but I understand the balance. And I think we have a better chance to support or families to support their children if they know. Um, and so that was the, our four points of what we're looking to do on curriculum night. So kids would be included. It's gonna be a little more chaos, organized chaos, I can all say. But the information will still be there for cur- curriculum.
With, oh, also sorry Sam, with the caveat that the slideshow with all of the curriculum information. Gets mailed out, emailed to families the next day.
Still have it.
Because all that stuff can be read, right? People wanna see what's happening, hands on.
They passed their, that's their four points. The format of the stuff.
I have a question, um. And just because I think I remember doing this as a kid, I know I'm. Yeah.
Probably.
Boy, it was still a little. Oh, yeah, I'm youngest, I'm the youngest one here. Um, is there anything? And I know that it depends on like the home life and stuff like that. But is there anything sent home with the kids to try to do something during the summer? Cause like two months of just utter chaos, you learn, you forget a lot.
We've tried a lot of that in the past and the, and the fact is.
A lot of people just don't do it.
Yeah, they don't do it, no. Lots of encouraging, yeah.
Yeah, I remember like summer reading, I remember like a math packet, oh my god, like.
Well, we can do like all kinds of challenges.
Yeah.
It with incentives and then every kid would just bring it back and all filled out. Okay, where's my free pizza? Where's my free book? Where's my free whatever?
The research behind summer reading can be inconclusive too, because. The kids who are going to read are going to read and summer. Should be their time to choose a book to read versus reading the book that their teacher is telling them to read. Um, and sometimes it can turn kids off from reading, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was, um, I guess like a. For, for parents who maybe they only have one child. Or maybe they haven't, had been like their, the oldest child going into a new grade. And, you know, we're like, I don't remember what the heck I learned in fourth grade, like just something to like prepare like this. It's kind of like an overview of. Whatever, I don't even know if that's part.
That's the curriculum night, that's the.
Okay, that's what that's.
That was what I didn't want to go away. So as a new parent, you walk in and you go, okay. What can I expect my child to be learning in first grade? That's my expectation that parents have that. It's not every detail.
Yeah.
Not every standard, but it's big picture and they know how they can drill down to it. They've gotta make sure that that's still part of that. But then. Where the rubber meets the road is the activity with the student showing their parent, this is something I'm not doing in CKL. Here's the standard, here's the, right, how it needs.
Okay.
I, I have a good example of how that works really well with one of my three children. Um, I had a slow starter to read. And when Center was using the Science of Readings of Florida portion of it. I received the parent component once a week.
Right.
So I could do with my granddaughter what the teacher had done with her during the week and I think it made a huge. Yeah, so, you know, those kind of things are, you know, really good.
That's what we're trying to build, but I think that. We're missing out on a piece of that partnership. It's our responsibility, but we're missing out on a piece of the partnership.
It was nice that they had prepared it, that Florida had it all set, could just copy and send it on. Yes.
Easy and also aligned to me.
Yeah.
And. Question and comment? No, well, I'm never gonna stop you, I don't care. Did, did I miss something where you said we were gonna do this this month? I may have missed it last month, but normally this gets a bit more, uh, pomp and circumstance out there. So the, this is. This recap is actually really important to a lot of community members and they tune in for it. And I saw it on the agenda on Friday. I was like, oh wait, we're talking about this, this month. Did I miss that? You said we were gonna talk about the bits.
I think we had it on ca- on the calendar and that's why I put it on, like our, our, where we broke all of our data. And so I just put it on a monthly because it's, like, there were several things I took off of here. Simply because like you just did your chronic absenteeism, absenteeism, truancy data, that used to be all part of this presentation and now there's not as much. Um.
Okay, that's fine. I, that's, that's on me, uh.
No, but I think, I, I mean, from the standpoint, and, and you said this, like, I have questions about my child's back scores. I hope people, if they have questions, that they can, whether it's on this presentation or on their individual child, like call your child's school, like that's fully my expectation. So people wanna know, is that really where you believe my child is? Or did they underperform, overperform, where they're at? Um, and then if people have questions about like district-wide, call my office.
Maybe when Marsha does her presentation about the tiers. Um, we can get that information to families ahead of times because that helps explain a lot about the intervention that's happening and, um. How kids are meeting those protocols.
Okay. Um, so, I'm gonna continue to harp on this. This is, this is a, a pet of mine. Um, I. Don't like, what I don't like about. These scores and what I don't like about S back, and I know teachers are gonna kill me, but. I understand that a lot of teachers don't like the, the test in general. That's the feedback I get from a lot of teachers, but. At the end of the day, they still have to take it. And. We as a district should be teaching them all the way through that. You're going to have to take this test and, and like I said, you can have in your head that it's not that important or it's. The test is confusing or, or things like that. But when you start projecting that onto the kids, they feed off of that and then they kind of realize, ah, I can blow this off in some way here. And it's been said a bunch of times tonight, you know, this is just one data point. And you're not gonna get that argument from me because I'm the person who pushed for any multiple data points to try to round this out. But it's still an important one. And I don't think the numbers should be kind of. It almost sounds like I try a lot to sit here and listen as a board member and sit here and listen as a parent at the same time. And as a parent, I'm hearing a lot of sweeping around. Oh, you know, we, we have some good growth, you know, we have some room for improvement, all this kind of stuff, you know, the test is, the wording is confusing. To think about that from a parent's ear, because the performance numbers are not great. I mean, this is at or above. So the performance numbers are not great. And if you hear the administration saying, uh, you know, we're not, we're not thrilled with that. It's really tough to hear as a parent and not be like, what do you mean it's not an important test? I just think that the teaching of this, and again. With, with the reasoning of somebody had a bad day, somebody woke up on the wrong side of the bed. These kids are gonna test for the rest of their school life. I mean, that's not an ex, no, no offense, that's an excuse. Like you're gonna have tests in middle school, you're not testing high school, you're not testing college. And a lot of times, you're not gonna get the second chance at it. You're, that's what you got, you, you have to prepare for it. And I think the more that we prepare them earlier. The better off they're gonna be. And maybe it doesn't improve these numbers right away, but. Maybe it gets their, their minds ready in form of test-taking mindset going forward. And that's a benefit in another cell. Uh, so, that's my annual S back, S back spiel. Um, the other question I had, the, the I ready math, I know it's going away, but norm, that's taken three times a year or was taken three times a year.
Correct.
Cause you only have the spring here, so, but you're only showing it as an example, as, as your example.
Spring, 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 yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Always, always welcome for, for all the members to share any question they could. That's why we're on here, to, to get. Alright, thank you, Edmund Tinta, for helping out with that.
Can I just say something about that?
Sure.
I, Arthur, I just wanna respond to that and tell me if I'm wrong, so, um. I remember you saying that last year and we actually talked about this prior to S back, I believe you can, if that's this. About like admin put out a message to say like this is an important test. And I don't remember, did it go to kids or, or to just the staff?
When staff numbers first, then was in digital backpack too.
So try and, we're trying to take those steps to say, like, cause I don't disagree, it's, it's how we're. Whether we like it or not, you know, when you look at, someone wants to say, how's Willon doing, that we can get insight. They're not showing our I ready data or dibbles. Dibbles yet, right? That might be coming. Um, they're showing S back. So we had sent out, we, we were actually very, um, delivered about it last year to say to families to.
Deliver.
Yeah, um, because I heard what you said, I don't disagree with you. So.
Get a good night's rest.
It was just, it's about approach, like do your best, like this is important. It was a teacher message.
Yeah.
Like without putting too much pressure on kids, but it was like, almost like a script.
And you did some nice things. You had some treats around it too, if I.
Yes, I, I were like, fully that kids.
At the end.
On full bellies. So we, we, I get some snacks that I left us, one time I left a chug on. They get very excited about that, I had researched about that. Uh, but to your point too, Arthur, I, I think it's important, I, I've been in districts and in schools where. They teach to the test and they're militant about it. And kids have like nervous breakdowns the day of the test because it, it's been hyped up so much. They have pepperellies and it's, it's such this like huge thing. And I, I just, I feel like there has to be some balance. In between there. And, and I totally understand what you're saying.
Oh, we're trying to find that.
We're, we're, we're still, yes, exactly.
Right, and I'm not advocating to tell, you know, third graders this test is gonna determine his future. That's not what I'm saying, right? I'm also not advocating for them telling third graders, eh, do whatever you can, don't worry about it, right?
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm all about that. But right now, I think there's more bottom balance.
Correct.
So.
Okay, financial report. Sorry, I chimed it on that. Let me correct again. Um, you guys are, yeah, it's eight forty-five, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Marshall will be on the docket for our future meeting, if we can gather in October, I think that would be a good thing. Okay, so, um, this is the September finance report, uh. And Donna was working feverishly to get this out to me today. Uh, trying to get all the grants in and applied and then not everyone's applied, but I think we're getting a closer picture. So if you look at program one, title one funds are not applied yet to, to that program. Thirty thousand dollars is gonna come back. I put the shortfall in there. Um, so you said, you know, what that was, that if, if it was over, that you would do non-lapsing funds. I said we'd see that at the end of the year. If we have to do it, we have to do it, but it came in, uh, more expensive, okay? Um, and then program two. Uh, you can see that again, title one funds are not applied, thirty-seven thousand dollars. We did apply the title four fund, which is the club money. And then all the shift in the positions is applied, so grade six RP are encumbered. And the library para educator position is unencumbered at this point in time, so that'll take some of that money down. Uh, special ed, the non-lapsing funds are not applied yet, so there's a hundred thousand that will come back into that. And there is additional outplacement, um, that additional outplacement is not encumbered yet. And it is for certain, we are going from six to seven. Um, I did get an email with absolutely no information, uh, last week saying that we were getting seen money. Um, that was, uh, thirty million dollars, if you saw this in the state, they were putting out an additional thirty million dollars in budget for special education. Um, it's not, the legislation is written in a way that's, um. It says it's for special education services, but it can't be used for special education services. It's really weird. So we're looking for guidance on how we can spend it, but we got forty-seven thousand dollars. So it does say you can't use that money for third-party vendors now, which would be an outplace. So we, we believe at this time, as of tonight, we are going to. They were able to apply it to a special ed position that's currently in place. It will be offset to the budget and that money then would be helped towards the off, off setting of the outplacement.
Um, that's just for this year though, right? So that's kind of like a grant.
The third, they put in a thirty million dollar kicker, it's like an entitlement. You didn't have to apply for it, they just gave you a chunk of change. So correct. One, um, but the way, we want, we need, we need clarification on how we can actually spend the money. So we make sure we spend it legally.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what I'm looking for. Um, program four is the same, basically, all, all the funds are, are for the regular transportation are encumbered and diesel's encumbered. Um, health services typical, funds are covered for some supplies. Contractual PD remain, the, those funds remain, no changing utilities. Eight is typical for this time of year, system-wide support, we did encumber the school choice, um. We did some licenses like Microsoft and things like that, um, but E rates not covered, that's our, um, that's our rates. And then, uh, the internet rate and then the fringe, the program has, has not been adjusted for your staff, so. Um, in the grand scheme of this budget, uh, there's, you know. Not a lot of money left in there for this time of year. Um. I don't have a price yet on the outplacement. Um, I don't know how expensive it's gonna be yet. Um, I am meeting with Marsha very soon and Penny and Donna. To go through the status of where our specialized funds are gonna, where we believe we're gonna fall, our projection. We do that on a monthly basis, basically, um, and we do that because. What do we expect in excess costs? Where are we for outplacement? Uh, what's changing IPs since the change in the budget? Are we over, under? How much do we have to apply for? Do we need to go back for non-lapsing, all those things, so. Um, it's still tight. And that's where we're at.
Um, I, I'm pretty sure I've asked this before and this might be an, an offline conversation too. I'm just wondering. Um, if, like, what the evaluation procedure is, and unfortunately, Marsha's not here anymore, but. Like what the evaluation procedure is, and unfortunately, Marcia's not here anymore, but um, for. Evaluating whether kids can come back or not.
So you mean, how does that go?
Yeah.
So it's typically um. Data from the outplacement location, when they have an I uh PBT. Um, it could be an annual review or it could be a try, right?
Yeah.
If they have data at any given point, it's always the goal of getting kids back, right? Um, and if they have data to show that one of our students who's outplacement. Has the ability to come back with supports in place, we would do that. Um, but she sits in all those PPTs, she gets all the data, could be VCPA data, depending on if it's autism, it could be, you know. Depending on what the need is, could be academic-based, it could be a variety of things. It could be that just the service that they're getting are so specific. That it would cost us more to hire in Wilmington. We just, it would make sense to, so we look at all of those things. Any other body questions?
Do you know what our non-lapsing account looks like after things are taken down?
Donna sent me an email today, and I think it's around one twenty-nine. Um, but this is, that's one of the things that she's working on. Um, and she, I just got was told, also told today by Rashin. The very last open P O for twenty-four, twenty-five was just closed. So they can, that means they can start wrapping up and we'll have an end of year report in October for twenty-four, twenty-five. Why is that important? Because that's what's gonna tell you what you can put back into your non-lapsing account.
So one twenty-nine might be with our last year of high school.
Correct. I I believe one twenty, one hundred twenty-nine thousand is a is a fair number. That, that is what I saw today, um, and I can give you the exact, uh, we'll have the exact for you next time. So you can see exactly where you're at. Cause like the.
Vote to put that money into the non-lapsing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a. Separate question, it is a finance question, you mentioned the the boiler repair earlier, that eleven thousand. Uh. When you mentioned going to town, being to be the school repair. Have, I can't remember, have we touched that yet?
Yes.
For the chimney, right?
No, I think we we were going to for the chimney. And then we ended up uh getting a vendor that did for last and we ate it at the end of the year, but we did use it, um. I have to go back, there's two, one was thirty thousand, I can't remember what it was for, wow. Uh, no, sorry, wait, um, we've used, we have used it though. Um, and that's, we would do the same thing, it was actually reimbursements one year, it was smaller things. We had a uh, we were worried, it was the year that we got the outplacements, I think, where we were so short. And so we went back for repairs that they were under ten thousand, but all of them were approved to come back into the budget.
Okay, so I, cause I'm just wondering, when you talk, I mean, this is. It's a bit more of a school, we're gonna discuss, but it's just another thing, and we talk about. The three million we have sitting in there, it's not truly three million, it's gonna be a little under, because we've used some of it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can actually get that exact number too, if you want, um, for October.
No, it's, yeah, it's fine, frankly, I don't need immediately, but it's just something to. That was kind of gnawing at me because I I was thinking to myself, we we did use some of that. So when we say there's three million in three years, there's really not.
We don't get interest on that, that's our question.
Oh, I think in the end, they they, and the bigger amount they get interest. She, but she builds that in.
Yeah.
Donna builds that into like how much money do we have in our accounts, it's not like it's just like one which gets it this type of way first.
I never know how much interest you get after a million dollars, but I'd imagine it's.
Part of the budget, Donna, Donna's got it.
Yeah, she, Donna getting interest is part of the budget as an offset. Yeah.
I have a question. Um. And I might just be having like a brain fart, whatever, but when we were talking about. When we were first talking about the playground, we were waiting for money to come in from ARPA. There was talk that maybe there would be more money coming in because of closing projects and finalizing things like that. Was it said that we might get additional of what, did that already finish, like, did we get all the ARPA money that we were ever?
So, yes, we got all the ARPA money that we were promised and the interest at that time. Has been applied.
Okay.
And what.
I didn't know if there was any extra after the placement.
So if, and then that's recent, like we literally just paid the final bill for this. Um, if there's additional interest, because there is, there are open projects still. And there's still funds in there, any interest would then be applied back to us.
Right.
This is how Donna has has it, so.
That's what, yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
When. How long does that take, or just whatever?
I don't know what's left for our projects, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I I always worry about ours.
Yeah.
They're allowed.
Right. Uh, moving on to you, agenda item ten, which is new business, we have regular meeting minutes to approve from August twelfth. Special meeting minutes from August twenty-seven and special joint meeting minutes from September fourth fall to approve this evening. Did anyone on move to you that?
Um, great promotion, we approved the regular meeting minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the special meeting minutes from August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And special joint meeting minutes from September fourth.
Okay. Okay, uh, favor, please say I. Looking on to P and D, which is fast size discussion. Uh. That's come up recently, so uh, was there was some specific you wanted to speak on that, or?
So I I. Think the, this comes back from Michelle Briffington's comments um about. Consideration of the the current fourth grade. Um, and just to be able to have a discussion about it, um, because. You talked about third grade for basically the same number, and I, I think you brought this up as a point last time. Um, and Arthur, I think you and I, you mentioned this too, just just that felt like that there wasn't discussion about a group that had one. More or one less kid in it compared to group that's in three sections, um, and so. I think it was important, um, that it was asked, you put on the agenda as an item just for discussion, so we know. Or has the opportunity to talk about that grade level, about that current, our current fourth grade level, that is in three, is in two sections. Where the third grade is in three section, or basically the same number.
And I believe you mentioned there's not room to make it a third classroom, it would have to be a different solution.
If we made it a third classroom, you'd have to take a space such as an intervention room that's underneath the gym. Or it'd have to be so small that it would fit in. Like a small, smaller special education room where we had kindergarten students in the past, that was okay, but. Fourth graders, not so sure. Um, that's something that we would have to look at, um, but space is an issue, yes.
What would it cost to add? I don't know the title of the people that.
I, para. Yeah, like a para or I would think it'd be someone higher up to a para, am I wrong?
No, no, a typical, so you have, uh. There's really three positions that you have in the west contract that. Depending on how you craft this, one's the staff support specialist, who you could just assign to the fourth grade. Um, the second option is a para educator. Um, typically, that's special education, but not always. And the third is a duty clerical aid, and that duty clerical aid is another position that's in there, that was just like a catch-all. Typically, they were meant more for duties, um, if you're looking at. The financial piece of, like, it's the para educator and the specs, a staff support specialist are the same grade. Um, if you got somebody with loads of experience and they take family benefits here in the sixty thousand range. If you got someone, um, who was uh newer. You might be in in waves, you could be in the twenty-five thousand mile range. So the the range is. Probably thirty-five. Yeah.
Full time, yeah.
Yeah. The lower end, twenty-five, twenty-seven, if you're on the very bottom of a pay scale for, for the west contract. Um. And and the wave benefits, um. So that's, that's kind of the, what supports would be in place for for cost. Um, and then I think what it would look like is just looking at schedules and going back to classes and seeing where supports. Where, where we can support them during instructional blocks, that would be, that's how you would send up.
What would be the the highest, so twenty-five to twenty-seven would be the lowest possible?
I'm I'm ballparking at sixty.
Sixty.
Full time person to split between the two classrooms. One person, correct, yeah. Yeah, so I had. I mentioned this. After the meeting, I thought about it more, and I talked to Brianna, but I talked to Phil about it, um. And we discussed the the timing of it and the and the notice of the discussion. Uh. I felt like. It was a very large discussion that was just kind of sprung on us. And it was a very lax minute, like you gotta make a decision now, because this this is happening, and I get the urgency of it, I do. I don't regret the decision we made, but at the same time. Like I said, I'm trying to look at it as a parent, and as a parent of someone in that fourth grade class. I'm looking at, if I was sitting there. I'd be yelling at us, saying, what, you just prioritized one grade over another. The the difference in in students in number was negligible, and you just prioritize the third graders because they've always had three. And I went back through all the yearbooks that my daughter has from kindergarten into third, and she's always been in two classes. But that class has never been below thirty-eight from first grade going forward, it's always been at least nineteen and nineteen. And. To my knowledge and to my recollection, there's never been a discussion of, especially when they get in, when she got in the third grade and she did forty-two, forty-two. I think they started at forty-four, or it was twenty-twenty, forty total. Uh, there was not a discussion here of. Can we, can we get a third teacher in there, or can we get an IA IA in there to help them, and I I look at all these years and I say. Is it possible an IA could have picked up something for some kids a couple of years ago? Possible, maybe not, but may maybe so, and we won't know, and I can't go back and change that, but. I would look forward and just. I have. I had a problem with that entire discussion, even from my, from my point. But I I just think it looks. Poor on us, it it looks from an outsider's perspective like we prioritize in grade over another. Yeah, I don't, I don't like that look, because I don't think that's what we did, but I I don't know how you. Look at it any other way, as as an outsider, or even as a parent of the fourth grade, a parent of a fourth grader. Like, I completely understand the frustration, because we're we're starting this year. At twenty-one, twenty-one, or even twenty-two, twenty-one, and there's, now there is no room to change. So it's. It's tough for me to separate myself. You know, the personal aspect of it, because my kids. But I'm trying my best, and I still think it doesn't, it looks. It looks like it it inequity, so.
I can explain the why. Um, and and a solution for the where, um. Because typically, I just give you the numbers, so that, I mean, we talked about this. The why is, has always been, and it's just, it's like, I hate this explanation, because I can't stand when someone says, well, it's always been that way. Well, I don't, just because it's always been that way, doesn't mean it always has to be that way. Um, it has always been the way that we have released teachers through attrition. When when we talk about numbers, and so if you started at a certain grade level with numbers, and it's just where we had it. It's where that group typically stands throughout their elementary career. I think the solution is, when we do budget. Um, it, this conversation has to be a budget season each year. And so when I give you the enrollment numbers and the projections for number of classes. That I'm budgeting for, I think that this is where this conversation has to happen. Um, so that if you do have a uh class of forty. Um, and and it could happen that a group comes in sixteen, sixteen, and next thing you know, they're at twenty-one, twenty-one, it has happened, right? The budget time is the time to talk about that, to see if you either wanna add. Right, because the time for us to change over, if we had to change a room over, it's the summer. Or two, if you want to go to um the IA kind of support, a para educator support, that you would build that into the budget. It would also allow you the flexibility to go, hey, four kids moved down. If it was a new position, do we wanna keep it in? Do we wanna actually fill it? You could consider that too, but I think from the budget standpoint, and I I I think you're spot on, I just. It's that's, we've never talked about it, it's always been a teacher left, right, it was through attrition. Do you wanna fill it, because we're talking about budget cuts, it's, we could go, we could change that, and you decided to fill it. It looked bad, I think, for the fourth grade, that that's the point of it, and my response is, we need to do that annually. Then it could be from both perspectives, it could be that, hey, our classes are fourteen, are people going to support this? And do we need to look to remove a teacher for next budget year? To go to classes of twenty-one, or vice versa, they're at twenty-one, should we be looking to add a teacher to come down to fourteen? Does that make sense? You're just trying to approach it, like, it could go either way, but the point is to have the conversation at budget time. When you have the numbers. You, if the numbers blow up in the summertime, there's nothing you can do about it unless you find money to add, right? Sorry, Sam, I was.
That's fine, um, can someone remind me how many? Kids are in the classes in fifth grade enough?
So they run the middle school model, so it's not a good comparison, because they run three sections.
Yeah, but my point is, not to cut you off, but the way that I'm thinking, I'm not. Or against it, but my thought process as to. Um, how do I wanna word this? Uh, preparation, so fourth grade's the last grade before they fly to hall.
Yeah.
So it's just, my thought is, well. A drastic change from school, completely different, I mean, it's such a big change to go from center to hall. That I'm almost wondering if. Then this could be viewed negatively, but I'm wondering if they were going to have larger class sizes in fifth grade. If them having a larger class size in fourth grade as that last year before they go up to the next class, where it's such a big change too, to have. Larger class sizes, switching subjects, whole new building. I, that was my question, see where I was kind of going with that, it was kind of like, okay, we're kind of inching towards. Different, that makes sense, whatever, that's why I was wondering how many kids were in the classes and.
As of last year, there were thirty-two in the grade above. My daughter, she's in fourth now, so the fifth had thirty-two, so you got, now you have thirty-two kids, or around, yeah, that's what it was, I don't know what they.
But do they all stay in the same, I can't remember, do you stay in the same section, and then you move as a group to those different subjects?
They have homeroom, and then they, they have three different homerooms, and then they move according to.
Yeah, they built the schedule based on it.
But there are three groups, every grade has three groups, right, at the middle school.
But are there? There's typically a rotation, so one group is in ELA, one group is in math, and one group is in science or social studies. You don't necessarily have to do that, if you were trying to buy time, you could still run three sections. But there are two groups, if that makes sense, so that group of thirty-two could be in sixteen and sixteen. I don't believe that's the way it's operated, um, but there, there are ways to do that.
So they're, they're good for next year, but I think we need to think of something to do this year to help them out. Especially since I saw, I know this is only one school and one point in time, but that thirty-eight percent concern me, I I know.
That's not the only piece of data that we have for this group, it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, that's, that's my feeling, that we, if we could do something to support them.
And I just did some quick math, and it's probably closer to seventy, if you got someone at the absolute top step. Uh, of the para educator contract. Uh, of the para educator contract. And they took family insurance, it's it's like sixty seven.
That's a worst case.
Worst worst case, I'm trying to show the like, the right, exactly, the the ends of, yeah. Yeah, and it was, um. Let's see, step one.
I can talk, yeah, I was gonna say. I'm, I'm sitting here feeling some frustration. And. In multiple ways. Because. It's we spent half the summer trying to fight to get a budget. And we had to keep reducing our budget and now we are on day eight of school. And we're having a discussion about the fact that we have an outplacement that's gonna cost us. Hundred hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we're having a discussion that we didn't, I think it was more of an oversight maybe in the. Busyness of budgets, not that that's an excuse, but we just. We didn't target. This group of fourth graders, we just. It got lost in the shuffle somehow, unfortunately. But now we have a chance to fix that. But I'm feeling frustrated because I feel like. In fixing it and dealing with an additional outplacement. Um, to meet the needs of our students. A hundred percent of our students and give them the best. Education that we can. We're we're, Phil's already saying this is tight, I'm looking. November, December, January, he's gonna come back and say, we need to free the budget, that's gonna affect. Every student and teacher in our and staff member in our buildings. And I just need it to be said that like. The townspeople, I understand, we have this balance between. Responsible budget, what we need. Some of these costs, like the outplacements, unfunded, ma- and unmediated things we have to do. And now we are hearing from parents saying, our kids aren't getting what they need, what can you do to help us? But we're tied here between this. You already cut a hundred and something thousand dollars out of our budget and now we've added it. Twice then and back in, in day eight. So. We just need, I and I don't, I don't think there's an answer to what I'm saying, I'm just expressing the frustration here. That. When we go to budget season and we go to board of finance and we go to board of. Selectmen and say, this is what we really need and they don't believe us and they come back and say. You're not being responsible, you need to cut teachers. And then we're having parents saying, we only have two teachers, it's not equivalent to the other grades. So where's the balance here for our town? To provide what our parents need, the minute we talked about cutting down to two teachers. The internet was going crazy that night. In seconds from when it was said. But when it comes to budget season. We're hearing. People on other boards saying, you need to cut teachers, you need to increase class sizes. And then we're tied with this budget and we're gonna get to the end of the year and we're gonna have a frozen budget. And people are gonna suck, student, our students are gonna suffer. That's just my frustration, I had to say it because it's. It's eating at me, I think we need to. Do something to hire a pair, because like it faces the problem, we need to do something to help these students to get what they need. Because the other side of that is. Test scores, test scores aren't high enough, well, we can't get them there if we're not giving enough. Of a ratio between the student to the teachers and I heard some things and it made me so angry from some people. Several times over and over on the internet and in. Meetings saying the ratio of student to parent of. Teacher to students, based on the population versus how many staff we have, you can't do the math that way, because it doesn't work. Many of those staff people are for one kid. And the teachers were the other eighteen or fifteen or how many ever in that class. That's what I have to say.
So. The question I think to ask. Our group that Phil for hard core facts. We need specific data, that's gonna drive the decision to add staff. For this reason. So this is when I wanna know about the. Um, attendance, I wanna know about the behavioral referrals for this very specific group. Like prove to me why us show why, because then we have. Ground to stand on when we need to explain to the public and our taxpayers. That we've made this decision, here are the needs of these children and this is why we made this decision. Adding a teacher, you're right, it's it's kind of tough. Right now, asking for anything extra or additional is tough right now, but if you have a group of students who have need. Then, right, we have to have specific facts and reasons, data that's gonna drive the decision. And they're very well could be, you had, was it about fifty? What was that percentage?
Or both the twenty eight was, well, fifty was.
Thirty eight percent level three. At four, on the S back for their math portion. So there is a data point for you, we need to, that's the second, well, the fourth grade now, so was that the first time they'd taken the test? Okay. And we've been looking, we've had other discussions too about looking at that bridge from fourth grade to whole school. And how to make sure that that's as seamless as possible and giving them their foundational skills or building blocks the best we can at center, so. I I agree with giving every student everything they possibly need. Um, but I think we are gonna need some specific data in order to. Build a case to explain it to people.
What's it look like?
Those questions.
What's it look like that you're going to actually be able to talk about without identifying a group and saying the current fourth group, grade group is?
Confidential information.
I don't, so. I don't just, I have that data, I know what it is. As soon as I say. I'm not gonna say the fourth grade group, I'm gonna say the eighth grade group, I'm making this up, a hundred percent fictitious. The eighth grade group has the most referrals of double of any group in the middle school. Then the eighth grade group is labeled the bad group, right? The eighth grade group has the highest percentage of students in intervention in special education per service. That is the group that struggles the most. That you just take, you take that on. I have that data. I don't know that I wanna share it because I don't want the label on it. Do I think the data shows some need? Uh huh, I do. And I think it shows it from a standpoint of a few data points. There's a few data points that are good, are better in that current grade level than other grade levels. The point is, is it about, it's about equity and support. So it's not necessarily, I don't see it as a data question, I understand what you're coming from on that. And that's how you wanna make your decision. Your data simply to me is. They have forty two kids in three sections, they have. Forty two kids in two sections, that to me is your data to say, are we providing an equitable experience? I think if you start getting into special education, which I know, intervention, which I know. Uh, who's in tier two, tier three intervention, which I know. The attendance data by grade though, which I know. We know all those things, I just really worry and I I don't, not trying to say no to that. I just really worry about labeling a small group of kids and if you look at Edsite. And you look at S back data, what's on Edsite right now, there's a lot of our grades have asterisks. And the reason why is because the group is so small, they don't release it. So I just, I and I put it out there, but the state doesn't. So Brianna, I don't mean to say no to that, that's just something I have, oh, it's always worried in me, I I don't like when. You know. Teachers or anybody or even in the community, you know, John's a bad kid and. John just carries this bad rap all the way through, that can take on a kid, it can take on a couple of kids, it can take on a grade. I really worry about that. I can tell you. Unequivocally, that grade would benefit from support. I can tell you that. But the data point that I'm I'm looking at at additional data. Beyond class size. I have not recommended it. Because I think it would be. Something that would be challenged, I think when we start adding sections and we just look at where where groups have always been. That's the reason why, and maybe I need a stronger argument for that, maybe that's what I need to improve on. But that's, I I, it's frustrating because I would love to give you that data, I just really worry about that.
Is there any way to gather some type of data? Historically, since it's been two sections for so long, like I understand each group that comes into that fourth grade class is an individual. Group of different kids, some kids are gonna have.
How it perform, maybe.
You know what I mean, but like historically, it's always been larger classes, larger. How do you say that? Yeah, two, only two sections, has it always been? Twenty something kid, you know what I'm trying to say, is there any way to pull that data?
I don't think I have any data to say that two sections.
To prove that it's like, look, two sections of twenty sucks.
I don't think I have any data to show that, the reason why, the reason why I don't have that is because we're so small, I can go down to the kid level data. And I can say, okay, I could say that and I'll look at the kid level data and go.
I didn't know if you're like, okay, so you're not putting it in the line.
It just, sometimes it just, it's the way it is.
Right.
It could be that there's seventeen high flyers, it could be that there's seventeen kids with se- really severe learning abilities.
Right.
It just depends on the group and sometimes. The bottom line, when you think about this, and this is mine, I think this is what I said to you, or if there. Is when you think about. Class of size and you think about a class of twenty one. Just thinking about feedback. As a teacher. I have to get to twenty one kids versus. I have to get to fourteen. And by the time I'm done with three cycles in fourteen. I've only did everybody else twice. In a class of twenty one, that's the example I come up with because I think. It's real and it's only in three cycles.
I just have, uh, it's not a question necessarily, maybe more of a statement, um, the. The solution that we're kind of tossing around or the proposal that we're tossing around is not gonna impact class side of all. It's gonna.
Correct.
In fact, have one more body in each classroom in in part, it'll obviously be an adult body, but it's it's a. It's a support to the teacher for sure. Um, so. The. What I hear is there's not space for a third. Class, did I hear that or?
It would be highly disruptive, number one, and number two, the spaces. The fact that we have a classroom underneath the elementary gym. I don't think it's a phenomenal, like you would never design that today.
It's not even rectangle, it's isn't.
It it's it's a rectangle, but just imagine basketballs bouncing on, you know, you and your kid bounces a ball on the wall in your house and you go like, hey, knock it off. Imagine twenty kids doing that in the gym, that's what, they tune it out, I don't know how they do it, but it's not, it's not a prime. Educational space, right?
That's how my daughter did first grade in that room.
It is, and and we've used it because where we needed sections, we needed space, that's where we end up using those. The space upstairs that is now, um. A special education office where they're doing small groups, it's shared by two special education teachers. It was a kindergarten room, I think, three years ago, maybe two years ago, two years ago, two, three, two or three years ago. But it was a class of twelve kindergartens, a class of fourteen. Uh, or you know, thirteen fourth graders, they're different bodies, it's not a big room, it would be tight.
So the. From a, from a solution focused discussion point to tonight, like. If we're even entertaining the idea of proposing or thinking about a. An IA in that class, in that grade. Um. I hear people's focus on data and I also adore data, um, but. From the teacher's perspective, how would an IA help with? A class of twenty one kids, like that's to me. What would it look like, how would it impact their their teaching, how how would it enhance? Their classroom, because I.
Feedback, that's why I give that example. Cause now I've got, if if they're rotating through and it's not all the time, right? So if I'm in your um, ELA class for half the time and I'm in the other class for half the time. That second adult is giving feedback. More. That's what they're doing, that's the biggest reason you, what's teaching learning, is getting the feedback. And now you're getting more because you have the second body, that is the big support you're putting into place.
They could give it to child fifteen to twenty one.
Yeah, it could be anybody.
Half of the.
It could be that Tracy needs a lot of extra support. Um, and that they're spending more time with Tracy, but that allows the teacher to move faster through all other kids, like. It it's, there's a give and take depending on need and and topic and what it is, but it allows. Students to receive more feedback on a more regular basis, that is the bottom line.
You could also have smaller groups, you could.
Yeah, you could run groups, yeah, depending on how it's run.
Groups instead of one.
Uh, I'm just. I probably shouldn't, but I I am using my own personal experience in classrooms and seeing IAs get sucked into. All kinds of things that they don't necessarily, that are, they're not necessarily there for. The the for, the goal for the fourth grade is to improve their. Academic experience, I don't know how to put it in a package nicely, but, um. To me, that that. Position has to be held pristine to that for having this kind of a level conversation about it.
And that would come through me and that would come through interviewing and that'll also come through admin. And that message down to teachers and to say that. Mrs. Jones is not going to make copies for you in the other room, Mrs. Jones is here to work with kids. Right, that's the type of stuff that I think you're talking about, that we would have to set those expectations and stick to it. And you asked, like, what? What can we do tonight? I think there's two things, one, think you need to know if there's money, if you're considering it, that's number one. I don't know that I have that answer for you tonight, you might have to wait a month on that. For Donna to settle with all of our grants, to get all of our, because most of our outplacements money uh, is in comfort right now. The settling of the additional third grade classroom. Um, it doesn't mean you couldn't open the search and not fill it. You could go, do I have a candidate or not? We could start that process just to see. And you've gone interviews and if you don't get someone that's just kind of besides it for you. Right, you could set spend the same amount of money and say, hey, anybody who wants to tutor. We're gonna offer anybody in the fourth grade in. You know, tutoring sessions once, I'm just giving ideas, right, of how you could spend dollars if you have them. But I need to, I would need to go back and say to you. It's tight, uh, this could be really, you know, burnt through all of your non-lapsing funds, like you might not have any money to apply next year. But. I would need the opportunity to do that. Um, because your range really, I mean, when you're talking about. Teaching range to. Para range, you're literally talking about a hundred, uh, twenty five thousand, twenty five thousand to a hundred and twenty five thousand. Top step with with family benefits. Huge change, if you're talking about parry, you're twenty five to sixty seven. So that's where I would wanna know, what can I pull? You look at what comes in and go, hey, great application. Great interview, they'd only cost X, we don't know about benefits, whatever they are, they are. Could make a decision there, but you asked about like what what you would do tonight? I don't know that you, I think the purpose tonight is to have a conversation to consider something for this particular group.
I would like to do it as soon as possible, I mean, even if we, um. Set up a contingent plan that if we had this amount of money free. Um. That we could move forward and even if we did an online vote or something, if the money was free so that. I hate to wait another full month to put it in place, um.
I. Need to know that the money's there.
Oh, yes, okay, I can understand that, yeah.
And and I don't know if that's why you're asking about non-lapsing, but that to me is. Something you could look at, but. And Tracy, this is your point. There are no pockets of money in this budget.
Right.
I don't build a budget that way, I never have, I never will. The prior years where there's been money has been luck because of insurance. You do not have that this year, you're in the hole as of today in your insurance. We do not build budgets as a board or superintendent. With fluff and excess to fund things when we want to fund things when they come up, it doesn't. With fluff and excess to fund things when we want to fund things when they come up, it doesn't exist. The things you do at the end of the year are because of insurance. Surpluses or things like that, that's what's allowed you to do it, but there's not excess in these budgets to go, hey, let's fund an additional teacher. Like the additional money that we just did for the funding of the third grade teacher. And it's in the big picture of how how to do this and you committed non-lapsing funds, it it wasn't there. I need to make sure that the money is there, or I even would recommend a commitment to do that.
I understand that.
Can you, so we have to solve this for one year? Because when they go to fifth, they have three classes.
For this group at this.
For this group at this time?
Yes.
Is there any internal movement that could happen? To solve it? So we don't have to hire someone? Pull them off of some other assignment? That's not needing as much as this group. Obviously, you have to have staff and.
Rob and Peter to pay for all. I mean, there's all of our professionals are one to ones.
Okay.
There's. Um.
Would an LTS for the year be cheaper? Because it's an out, it's a. You don't have to pay benefits.
BA step one? Could be.
How much do you think that'd be?
Um, you do have to pay benefits, it's 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 the full year, but if you said. Um, uh, you're coming in October one, I don't have the policy says you don't get benefits. So BA step one is forty five minus a month, so you're in the forties, that that could be a solution, it's in the thirties. And you're losing the opti- the. You're gonna get someone who has not gotten a job.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But it's.
It's a helping hand.
Right, that's and. It it it. Again, sometimes the search matters and sometimes it's like you just get an amazing person and it does, they don't have the serve, right?
Cause I wasn't gonna hire someone, sorry to cut you off, hire someone for just one year too, because next year. A job won't be there.
They could vault within though, if someone left and they could be, take a pair of position, I agree.
Yeah.
They're the bottom of the the group if. It's not there, but I think the long term subposition could be something that that's not a bad idea, John.
Maybe do that for the.
Sam.
Whispered into me.
For this month. I'm.
I know, I mean.
Still need to make sure. I I don't have thirty five thousand dollars sitting in the budget somewhere where I'm like, okay, here we go, it doesn't exist. But I think if you're looking at. Maximizing. Support, you get a certified teacher. You don't have to offer benefits. If they're really good and someone leaves, you could offer them the job in the future. That's not, that's a really good idea, it's just a matter of. It's a matter of. Finding someone, one, and making sure you have the money for it, it's a great idea, actually.
And putting the trust in that, the trust in.
Sam with the idea of the night.
Mm-hmm. Hey, you got another one.
All right.
This might be too fantastical. But. Could we ask for parent volunteers to help out with the classroom?
You could, but the inconsistency. You you're looking for consistency, that's what you're looking for.
Okay.
And. Sometimes it's just it. It turns out like something comes up and then it'll go there and the teacher's relying on them to be to be there and then they're not, it just makes it harder. I think parent volunteers are are which actually what we've talked about trying to get more of, um, they're good for the catch here and there. But for consistency, I want this person to be our employee. If you're gonna do it, make them our employee, make them, you know, someone that is self accountable to what they're given.
Okay.
Otherwise.
And LTS would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely. It's a great idea.
It is.
What if, could we as a board? Ask you to get, how fast could you find out? But we're not leaving the class out in the wind for a month.
Well, you you would have to have it posted anyways, so realistically, it is a month. Because for me to post it, I gotta post it for two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would leave it posted, then by the time the interview. It's a week. And then I have to be in the following week. So you're looking at your next board meeting, if I post it tomorrow. I would know. If if I could swing it and realistically. If there is a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars in there at this point in time. And a hundred thousand dollars of that, I'm spending all your non-lapsing funds, but remember there's money going back in. So really the one twenty nine is gonna turn into, I'm gonna say two twenty nine. Because of if you vote to put your money in from twenty four, twenty five, you're two twenty nine. Take out the forty, I'm gonna call it two thirty, keep it easy, minus the forty for the teacher. Third grade teacher, you're down to one ninety. Uh, I'm taking out a hundred thousand dollars for the outplacement. And you're down to ninety thousand dollars as your buffer. Again, that doesn't put you in, but. There's thirty thousand dollars in that, if you want to do that, as a one year position.
At the end of the year, we'll get some of that a hundred, right? From this state.
What a hundred?
A hundred that we've used for the outplacement.
That that's, I'm factoring that in in the hundred.
Okay, okay.
You're gonna spend a hundred and fif- you could spend a hundred and fifty after excess costs.
Okay.
Can you explain to me how? Um. How like how it would work, like let's say we do that and we find somebody to get one long term sub. How would they be split between the two classes, like every day, one day they're here, the next day they're there?
Let's do this.
Bing bing, back and forth.
I'm gonna make a recommendation to you. This is further down your agenda. I'm gonna propose that you have an ed spec meeting. On September twenty thirty. At six P M. I'm gonna propose that this item also be, if you can, if you can meet that night, I'm hoping you can.
Yeah.
If we met on September twenty third. For ed specs, you add this as a second agenda item. I can bring Sam. A schedule of what this would look like. So that I can take the two classroom schedules and say, this is what, how we would consider the position. Um. I can still post it, it's no harm in posting it tonight or tomorrow, right? There's no harm in doing that. Um. And I would also be able to tell you. Yeah, I can, I think we have the funds for it or not. And if you're comfortable with spending your non-lapsing funds down. You could do it. The. Big thing is you know. Somebody moves in tomorrow. You have no buffer.
Can I give you some ideas about how that could work? Um. There's lots of ways to move things around, let's imagine that the two classes have parallel schedules, I mean, they do the same thing at the same time.
Yep.
I have no idea how things are running this grade, but let's just say. If there's a big academic block in the morning and a big academic block in the afternoon, and right now they're both doing ELA math. And they decide that ELA really needs to be their focus, let's say. One of the classrooms can flip their math in ELA. So therefore the person would go to ELA in this class in the morning and then hit the ELA in the afternoon in this class. That does kind of affect. Um, kids being pulled out and small group things and like interventions sometimes have to rearrange and work with that. But it's possible to do it that way, I have said it that way before. Um, you can also. Um, have them do a certain target, like let's say phonics is a thing. That means this person's gonna pop into the ELA group in class A, whatever time that is, um, rotate the. Make three groups out of the children, then they have a teacher table, they have this other person's table, they have independent time. That means they're all rotating through this phonics table, and maybe. It doesn't take that long, maybe the phonics table is just a quick infusion of this one thing that's really needed. High dosage, short period of time, then they can pop over to the other classroom and run their table with that teacher and independent group, same thing. High dosage, short period of time, just infused that they really need quick shot, and then all of the kids in the whole grade then have had, let's say. Ten fifteen minutes of this high in, um. Oh, and see phonics lesson. So you can do things that way. And I would never, I wouldn't say have a a helping individual person in a class for a full day. Because. That can be a little bit too much in the room and also then you've got your other person like hanging out to dry, as that teammate, I would wanna know, okay, like. The savior is coming, I just have to hold on until afternoon math or whatever it is. Um, but the staff can work it out together and it's really helpful with their schedules are somewhat parallel because then they can work together a little bit better.
That's the data.
You could also, and this is totally like. Way outside the box. Um, but if you look at like the multi-age classrooms, that's not we're doing care, but look at your levels, we do not run, we run heterogeneous. Groups, right? So we have kids of all different levels in each class. But if you had a group that was particularly struggling. They're probably already getting intervention outside of the classroom, additional for that they're getting in the classroom. But that person could also during their math block, take those three kids from this class, grab the two from over here. And take them to um another location, maybe in the hall, that's why we have. In our ed specs, those like little meeting spaces, I forget what their phone right now, um. Yeah, but they could meet with them there, that's kind of like bonus for those kids who just need a little bit more. Because when you have a group of twenty kids, you have a teacher running a small group, she's doing like whole group lesson, right? Everybody's together. Some of those kids are not hearing you the first time, you're gonna have to get low with them, get tight with them. Then you're gonna run a small group, so you've got a teacher on the table with some kids. These friends out here are doing independent work of some kind. Um, maybe some kind of center work and then move to the next group, the next group, so that's like two thirds of them are hanging out here. Doing independent work and usually they can and they will and they do and the teacher teaches them the procedures for which, but if you have another grown up. Now that's less time that they're totally on their own and they can get like better infused information.
Hmm.
So those are some ways adding an individual to that grade can work and it really comes down to. Um, your staff collaborating, being willing to think about flexible ways to do things and you need a person who. Is comfortable with ELA, comfortable with math, can handle their own behavior because they can't be trying to teach a table and have classroom management problems. While the teacher's over there with her group because then she has to stop and come over here, right? So you need somebody who's doing classroom management, understands social needs of kids that age. And is able to hit academics all at the same time, it's kind of like a wonder, Superman, Wonder Woman style. Individual that you're looking for, but it can work and it definitely can help.
One thing too that I think would work well is if if you took the whole fourth grade. Divided them into three reading groups or three math groups and now you've had three adults that could be doing, no, you can't.
No, what Brian described is exactly what kind of looked like, I'm looking at the schedule. And there are certain things that are aligned and certain things are not, but exactly what you just described is what the math block is at the same time. But like the ELA sections are not, and again, this is where we would go back to data and go. What are the true needs of this group? Are they really high in math and low in ELA or you know, is it? Struggling in ELA and math? Um, is it a particular class? But the schedule, the way it's laid out right now. Math is at the same time, uh, most days. Uh, every day. Um, but ELA blocks are at different times and so you could easily jump in and support those like skill blocks. You know, content blocks, you can. Definitely could infuse it and the good thing is is. Where one class has the win, what the kids were talking about, what I need now, um. They're not necessarily at the same time. So you, they could help with that too, that's small, small construction as well.
Yeah, the simplistic way that I was kind of thinking of it and I know that it's not in a perfect world that if you have. Whatever forty five or sixty minute block and one teacher and there's twenty kids, each kid theoretically gets how many minutes? With the teacher one on one time, and I know it's not like, okay, here's your five minutes next, and it's just like a conveyor belt. Like adding that second person would essentially double the kids' times for one to one for. Student to an adult, and like I know that maybe some kids need. You know, extra time and other kids are fine, and I don't need you, get away from me, let me do my own thing, um, but. Yeah.
Um, they may. The the challenge with scheduling too is when you only have a couple of sections and you're trying to fit a special education teacher into a grade level. Like their schedule is madness, so to try and move things around. It's like a wicked ripple effect. If you put it uh an interventionist into a classroom for a certain slot. And suddenly you change, try and change that time, well, their schedule now impacts. Third grade, second grade, first grade, kindergarten, so the way this schedule is built. And what Brianna just so brutally described. Could definitely work like that's. Teacher explanation one on one, that was. Spot on.
Yeah, that made a lot of sense.
Can we recap on what we're going to do or what you're gonna do?
So as long as you're okay with it, I'll post, I think the, listen, I think the a long term sub is financially. Be less risky. Position. Um, because the pair could turn out to be seventy really fast. The teacher could be really expensive really fast. The long term sub. Is. A beginning and end date. Person knows that. You're gonna probably gonna get a certified person. Um. So I can post that. With the timeframe of. You're still gonna have another discussion before anything would happen.
On the twenty third?
If you can meet on the twenty third, that would. Then we can come back to.
Sub four.
What?
Yeah, I'd be posted.
It's a long term sub for fourth grade. No, I just, I posted as a long term sub for fourth grade. Certified physician. I I'm gonna be honest with you. That would be the best gig that someone could come and get. Because. They're co-planning with other teachers. Right? Their schedule is. There they, the intent is not to release my kid, you know, fourth grade teacher's kids in this person. The intent is to to, that there's still that fourth grade teacher's students, but they now have an additional certified support in place. Again, feedback, 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 small groups. Um. And then on twenty third, I can, I think I can tell you that by by that date. Here's what, cause we're looking, we've been asking for the um cost of the outplacement. Um. I should be able to have a good picture for you for. And I think Donna could give you non-lapsing, like that would be close all the POs, we should be able to have all the mission financially. And budget wise, big things where where I think will be.
If for whatever reason you don't get any bites on that, could you perhaps reach out to the people that didn't work out for that other? Thing that you just hired and be like, hey, you know, we didn't have this, but.
I'll get bites. I think, uh, yes, but I think I will get bites, I'll be very surprised. Cause at this point, people that are certified that have gotten jobs. Are looking to be in classrooms. This is a classroom job that they can. You know, say they can speak to an interview, like it's it's a different.
Really good experience.
Yeah, absolutely.
You need a motion to move?
Nope. Cause you're not doing anything yet. I'm gonna post a position that doesn't exist yet. That's what I'm gonna do.
Sounds good.
I'm not, I would never fill it without knowing, but I'm gonna post it and see what what comes in. And it'll give me time to to come back and if if you can all meet on the twenty third, we'll add it to the agenda. And if we can pay for it and you're still thinking that's a good idea and I show you the schedule. Then. I think you go.
What time on the twenty third?
I have six P M.
Six.
I tried to do an early meeting again, even the last one made the wrong.
Can you look at the staff support people's schedules and see if they can offer any backup like more immediately?
Hmm. What do you mean right now?
Yeah.
In the next month.
I'm pretty sure their days are probably quite booked up, but maybe there's something on there that we can shift.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Like get a minute.
So I I just wanna say, um, I get. As more of a trying to help and and do what we feel like we can do from these seats. I think. Asking the fourth grade teachers what they need is hugely important, like. If if we're gonna put a body in there, I I hate to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it like that, we're gonna put a person in there. To help out in the immediate, I think it needs to be. And. The the fourth grade teachers have this resource and then they. Can use it as they need to. Yes, let's.
They'll build it with guidance from you, from me, from. Lisa. But they're also gonna build it with guidance from what their kids need. Based upon their data, right? So they're gonna say, I really need, our students really need support during this time. That's what we're gonna make happen. They would be able to provide that feedback. They would be on the interviewing committee, like that would just be part of the process.
Well, I don't necessarily mean the long term sub. Part of it, I mean, like right now, so John.
Oh.
Or whoever.
Staff support specialist, like what are you doing right now? Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, we're not gonna, I just. Send someone down and. Stop on for our very capable fourth grade teachers, what, I know that, but like, there's, if if a person shows up and they're. It's not done in a in a planful way and like I've just seen. I've seen bad things happen.
Yeah, it it's it's hard when it's not consistent, when you don't know they're coming. You're planning for tomorrow and then that person gets pulled to sub in another classroom and you're like, I planned this thing with two people, what am I doing now? I get the point. We're gonna support it where we can. Kids are gonna get some additional feedback during that time. It's it's a priority target, but it's not gonna be super planful like. Cause we could plan for a Monday. Walk out Monday and go, it's gonna happen, then Tuesday, three people call out and. That person's run all place public classes. I understand your point too, Brianna, though, like if whatever. I said the same thing about intervention folks, if they have a spare minute, which they typically don't.[1796.98] In their days, there's someone that has a one-to-one whose child is out. Where can you be gone?
Yeah, even simple things like transitions can be really hard for children. So if you're leaving a classroom to go to lunch. And that's a part for one certain person or several of them for whatever reason. And the person who's on lunch duty is just waiting down there for the classes to arrive.
Right.
If you ask that person rather than sitting there and waiting, could you come up and help assist us walking down the hall so that the teacher can stay back with? Whomever needs some transitional assistance, like if something very simple like that can make a huge difference for everybody else for the group at large. So you have like big things people can help with, but also very teeny things that seem simple that can make a big impact. So that's why I was thinking of that staff support person. Maybe there's little slots in the day where they could pop in, but. The teachers are right, will totally know what they need and when they need it for.
John, you said next steps too. I just wanted to recap that. I also now have this in my notes for. Having this conversation at budget season. Perfect. So that way it's always when we can, you can have a conversation about the number of sections. And if there's a bigger section, do you want to add a building support? It'll be part of that number piece.
Do we have three in our ed specs? Do we have three classrooms for every grade level?
No.
No, no.
It's not, it has to be not in our conversation.
There too, but that's what your numbers are, you're you you build it off your projections.
Yeah.
And then your flex spaces, like your flex spaces where if you have a third, you have space for it.
But that's something also that needs to be considered when we're having a discussion about class size because you need to look at the space that we have back.
Very good conversation. That was an outstanding idea. Thought I thought, which I thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we're making four to ten eight. That was a big one. Speaking of our exits. Um, we're gonna discuss requesting the board of selectmen form a school building committee formally. Uh, there was discussion about that last week. What is the formal process for that?
So I'm, I don't think this is a big discussion point to be honest with you. And the reason why is I think. You've had discussion now that you wanna do this to get the process going so they can start having it. You're still gonna continue to do your work. Um, what I did was I pulled. Together for you. This is the letter that I sent Erica last time it happened and it has the um. It has the uh verbiage of what the motion was in green. And basically, the board just said to appoint a committee to pursue a building preschool through eighth grade school on a site other than the current center in elementary halls. Uh Memorial School. That was the last one. I'm not telling you that that should be the motion. So what I did was, and again, the purpose of this is you can still continue to do your work. You can still work on ed specs. It would be, it's gonna take them some time. You would be making the subject suggestion to the selectmen. To form a school building committee. I gave you two sample motions that I think are more aligned with what the discussion has been. To give them a little flexibility and not say new site. Remember that you're suggesting the school building committee, but they can make the school building committee for how or where they want. Right? So the idea, and I think this is was came out at the joint meeting was. People in that room understood the need for a joint, uh, uh, uh.
Consolidated.
Consolidated, thank you. Consolidated pre-K through eighth grade building. So whether that's a new site or it's hall, I think we all agree, can't be centered. And so it's either in hall or a new site. Do you wanna say that or you just wanna say preschool through eighth grade? Basically, what would happen is if you did this motion tonight and you approved it, you continue to do your work. And then at some point, when the school building committee has their stuff, you would have their ed specs for them. And I have more updates for you. Uh around this and and later in the agenda, but this would just, I would draft a letter tomorrow to P, the selectmen. Similar to what I did to Erica and just say, this is what the board of ed has um voted on. And please uh start your process and then they have to follow their process.
And we're just making that recommendation. They don't have to stick with that either.
Correct. And if you're going to have a con- conversation about a consolidated school, the access of seventy-nine percent reimbursement. You need a school building committee and.
And we need to make sure all the I's dotted and T's are crossed properly. Because when we take this to the state, we need to be sure we're showing up with something that's totally legit. So that's something to think about too, like that's another reason why this collaboration between all the groups is so very important. Sam.
I know that this is just a suggestion and they can change it. Um, if they want, but were we talking about also suggesting a charge? Or where do we talk about that?
I think we did talk about making some recommendations for their charge, yeah.
Would that be part of this motion? Like we suggest you make this with the following charge and if it's just. A blanket suggestion just to make sure that we're not making the same mistakes as last time with the charge.
I.
They make them.
Bring to their attention just so that, because it's easy to be like, yep, sounds good. Let's just, you really think they're gonna change it?
I think it's two different steps. This is like, please get started and get the SBC rolling. While that's happening, like we're gonna have to have multiple blaming things in the air at the same time. This to me gets that part going and rolling. Then in the meantime, right, we're talking about our recommendations, we're working on other ed specs. Recommendations includes things that we think should maybe be on the charge. We can put that together in a document and pass them, pass that over to them. Um, but I don't think it's the same thing. I think it's different.
But it'll take my job at the same time or.
It's gonna take them a while, I think, to pull together a committee. I do think you have time to do it, but. If you, if the board wants to make a recommendation of the items that are in the charge. You should do a similar thing where you write a letter and say, here are the fourteen items that we feel should be in the charge and then they. Honestly, they can take it or leave it.
I don't know if it had to be in tandem to this, that's all my question was. Do you think there's enough time to try to?
Yeah, it's gonna take them a while.
I think.
Whether they listen or not, honestly.
Yeah, and I can also just send you the last one. And you can look at the last one and then weigh in on it too. So that way, next time we talk about it, you've seen it.
And really, you know, we're just trying to help and support. There's a lot of things that will be in that group's. Decision and control, whatever, but um there's a lot of things we can still help with and whether, like you said, whether they choose to. Use what we offer, that's not really something.
So I was trying to simplify it, but I was just trying to say, here's, here's your motion set.
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. Um, number one, I like option one because um when we, I served on the committee last time. We often refer back to documents such as this, to make sure we were on the right track. And I like the idea of having those two options in there so that they don't. You know, let's go with this option, but you forgot that option.
Presumption was like, see, they're doing it again.
Yeah, the other thing I really include in the letter is I include those important dates about the seventy-nine percent. And the July twenty-sixth, so that that's part of the letter to remind them of their timeline um. Based on the the agreement with the state.
I also like the first one.
Yeah, same.
Because I'm already hearing things about like, I would, I would. Definitely no to a new school and he goes, why can't we just do hall, 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 you know, so to have it as both. Being, you know, recognized as both options. I think the second one could be viewed a certain lens that it's just a.
Food and art.
Okay, so you prefer one, ones, do you have a preference?
Um, I mean. Well, I do, I'd like to because it's a blank slate, like it's. The the school building committee will have um access to everything we have access to. Our our words in our recommendation are to to set up the school committee, school building committee are. Gonna be forgotten in about two seconds when they have the owner's project person, whatever that's called. And um. They have all these dates in front of them and they're going to like, they're seeing this date looming in front of them. So like, I don't. There, our recommendation is to have a consolidated pre-K through A school. That's literally what our recommendation is. So I don't know why we can't just say that. Like, there's so many politics and so many, so much divisiveness about this subject. That's motion two is literally what we want to do.
Can I add something to it really quick? Can I go around and get a first field first? Yes, I respect that. Okay, what do you think, Anne? One?
I'm gonna say one because we don't need to spend time looking at center school.
I'm gonna say one because that specifies the known uncertain terms, the two options that Tammy brought to the state. And I think that's very important to highlight is that the state is not going to consider anything that's not either on a hall site. Or a new school, new site, and there there's no deviation from that, though. That's how she got funding was presenting those options. So I think that highlighted that in the question is just, is there gonna be that like a whole?
Yeah, traces. Does it matter too, which one?
It does matter, but that does make sense.
Okay, coming back, Sam.
Yeah, I was gonna kind of say what Arthur was saying, that I think that it's, I understand there's a lot of divisiveness, but I think that are. I need to use the word technique because it sounds kind of manipulative, but I think that what. What we're trying to do this time that wasn't maybe as well done last time or whatever, what we're trying to focus on. Is transparency, clarity, communication, all these things and to to keep with this theme. Of this is what we're going to present because we were still, I think we were still going to do that to be like, we're giving you hall, new or no. Right? At some point, we're gonna present that and I think doing, okay, it's in, it's it's just redundant so that it's. Very clear that it's like, okay, I understand the blanket statement because that kind of leaves it open, but I think if we. Keep everything like the same information coming out at every opportunity, like, okay, here's the motion, which matches the information that's gonna come out, which matches that. The projects, which matches the people voting whenever they do that. Like, do you want the hall? Do you want the new? Do you want the no? You know what I mean? I think it just kind of sticks with the theme of. The same information everywhere instead of leaving it up to interpretation, which I think could be very dangerous, especially with the unfortunate divisiveness that it seems to be.
All excellent points. I I would like to vote. Or whatever, I don't know, whatever we're doing, like.
I'll call, I would like to make a motion. I move that the board of education requests the board of selectmen. Appoint a school board and school building committee to pursue a consolidated preschool through eighth grade. School on the current hall Memorial Middle School site or on a new site to be determined. Second.
Discussion. Um, favor, please say. Um, and we will obviously have a way more discussion about that.
Yeah.
We can check that off in our list. Thanks, everybody. Okay, uh, I am eleven. Old business A, policy twenty-four hundred evaluation of the superintendent is our second read. Oh, look, it's coming. Okay. So this is our second read. Everybody should have a chance to go over it. We talked about it last time. Wasn't anything, I can't remember what we talked about last time. Sorry.
We just gave out the first read and just noted that um this makes it available on a district site. This gives. An opportunity for uh any kind of conversation that Phil wants to be added to that and. Arguably, just as important of the thing is that we can see evaluation to a separate night, so we traditional board meeting.
Thanks for the recap. Alright, anybody who's not on Calisie to jump, and if you wanna comment over. Everything, anything, everybody's coming.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I said it before, I'm just gonna say it again, I agree with, but on a different night. I appreciate that Phil gets to have feedback. In my opinion. We should not be putting it on the website for several reasons. Number one. Um. We don't discuss personnel, personnel issues in. Outside of um executive session and I don't care whether it's the superintendent or the brand new employee that came in. In whatever position, I don't think personnel issue should be just put on the website because I think it opens it up to be. Taken out of context pieces and used in various ways for positive or negative reasons. I also think that. As a person writing it. When your audience is the superintendent versus your audience is the townspeople. Um, I think it's going to change the way you answer the questions one way or another. That's my opinion. I I don't support it and I haven't since you brought the discussion up, um however many months ago.
Alright, I think we're ready to roll on this, but I think we also need to wait. Do a little call, I guess, in a hurry. Oh, we had a motion.
So I would be going to board of education except policy twenty-four hundred evaluation.
Okay.
That was Sam, right?
Yeah. Discussion. Alright, um, create.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do have discussion, I'm sorry. So, um. I I really, um, kind of echoing through these concerns. I I I have the same concerns, but. Um, Phil, from a, from the perspective of a superintendent, um. Having this information before again, like knowing that your evaluation is going to be posted on the website, um. I was completely against doing it that, the the time that we did your last evaluation. Um, I think that was way out of line, but to to do it in a planful way, um. Do you feel like that changes things?
Yeah, and I'll, I know it was definitely liable anyways. I think where it gets slippery and I've said this is that. When you have a board who's providing. Feedback based upon data, never an issue, right? And that was my sticking point in this policy was that. Anyone can say what they wanted. And if I presented other data that it was, it didn't matter, you can say what you want. You don't, where where I think you, it could create an issue. Um, is where you have the back and forth. You don't want to pit a superintendent versus their board. Typically, if that's happening, it's, you should be writing a letter to each other saying, we're gonna part ways, right? So that's where I just wanna, you know, I I would know that writing's on the wall. I just don't know that. You would wanna have that agreement in the executive session. You would wanna let that person. Walk away, just as you would want to walk away and then because it helps your hiring process. Does that make sense? Like when you post, you don't want the next superintendent looking at someone and going, oh my gosh. Man, who's this Ann Groshon? What did she, look at all these things she wrote about the superintendent. You wanna be able to back that up. I guess that's, that's, and I think right now, the way this is written is that's taken care of. Um, I do think that, and again, whether I think that or not, Jen. All my evaluations are F O Y B L.
I understand that, um, but I think we can all, okay, I'm not gonna speak for everybody sitting around too, but. I certainly understand the distinction, the difference between something that's F O Y B L, that someone actually has to go and search for and ask for and request. And have a conversation about it as opposed to clicking a couple of buttons on the internet.
Yeah.
That there's two very different things.
Yeah.
Um.
For sure.
And one of the things that I feel like is a feather in this board's cap is. We've had some heated conversations and we've had some heated disagreements, but we've been able to come to. Some basic understanding and agreement on how we can move forward and operate together on the team. Um. I'm worried about in the future, when there's a board that is not necessarily as. Collaborative as, I don't know, um, what the word.
Awesome.
That there's, there's a fear that this could be used as weapons, a little dramatic, but. As not something that um is helping someone to grow, to get better, to learn from or. It's out there for discussion.
Uh, I do think that. Uh, I do think that, and I'll I'll put it on here, I just, I mean. The thing that I really disagreed with was not the online portion, I I just will tell you that flat out. I disagreed with. This portion here. Where a board member could write anything they want, they can make any claim they want. And I just said, you might as well write my evaluation on Facebook and say what you want. There are now levels in place, things in place. Where I can, the board chair can say, Anne. Do you have data to back up what you're claiming? And if Anne says no. The board chair really should be saying. You probably shouldn't be writing that then. If the person says, yes, I have data. They should be able to write that in my evaluation, that's part, and I have to be able to handle that. If you're trying to get rid of someone. You need to have do, have that before you absolutely roast them on evaluation. Um, things have to be really bad. Uh, for that to happen, like you should be having a conversation in executive session if you're trying to say, look, it might be time for us to part ways. But the things that are in here, if you just don't like me, Jen, and you're writing things that are just, you know. Phil's that crazy bald guy, like. There, now the board chair can address it, right? Now I can write an addendum to it. And sometimes that's gonna look bad for the board. But honestly, it could be just about that member. I have the ability to say something, respond. And I think the things that are put in there now, there are some little layers in there that allow the board chair to step in and say something. And question and say, look, and I'm reading what you wrote. You. Probably have to have data for that, and if you don't, you probably not, don't, you know, probably should not include that. And it also allows now that if you write that and you say you have data. I now get it and I have a period of time to say, well, Jen, I have data to show something different. And I have the ability to present that to you. And then for you to go, okay, yeah, you're right, or you can say, well, we have conflicting data and I'm gonna present mine and you're gonna present yours.
Side by side. Not even on.
Right. And so I think those are. You don't want that to happen often. Cause it looks, again, it pits us against each other. But you should have the ability to give me real feedback. That's honest and. Supported by data. And put it in my evaluation. Just as you do for good things. Things that I need to improve upon, I need to be able to hear those things. But again, if you're saying, and I'm not saying this to you, I I don't want this to come across wrong, if you're ever trying to get rid of a superintendent. You don't roast them on an evaluation. Right, if I made some really critical error, you pulled me into a value, into executive session, say, that was a bit really big error. I'm not sure this is gonna work out, we need to talk about what this is gonna look like now moving forward. And then you cut ties. But you don't wanna have an evaluation coming out, and I understand your point. That is. Pitting board members against each other, pitting super tenants against board members, or pitting superintendent against against the board. I think the layers in this now. Allow. There's less chance that that will happen. I don't know if I'm trying to convince you or just give you.
No, I I hear all of your points, and I I wasn't necessarily aiming it at you, although you're the only superintendent in the room, I believe, so I I feel like I. You have an important perspective here, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Is this aligned with the K? We we have. When we were in K there.
Yeah, there's also some, there's also some willing to things in here. Yeah, and and there are things that make sense, you couldn't even see that, sorry, um, there's things that just make sense. It's a. This was your point, this is a compromise. To get to this was a compromise.
Do you feel good about it, Phil?
I wouldn't have, I would have thought of that policy.
Okay.
Quick question, sorry.
No problem.
If this did fail tonight, does it then go back to the policy? Committee, is that how those things work? Okay, that's all it was. Not saying it will, it's serious.
I can't click that one, that's gotta be you. Just click.
Alright, we have a motion to.
Approved.
Update and approve policy, is it new? Policy twenty four hundred evaluation of the superintendent, the motion made by Arthur, seconded by Samantha, we're gonna do roll call. John.
Yes.
Sam. Yes. Jen, yes. Anne, yes. Brianna, yes. Arthur.
Yes.
Tracy.
No.
Alright. Six one passes, so we will meet separately um in the. Spring, let's shoot for March, April. And whoever is in charge of this group at the time will uh run a meeting specifically for the purpose of that evaluation. Okay, moving forward, uh, old business B, that's just a quick little thing, school building project discussion.
So I have some things to, can I kick you off with a few things?
Sure.
Wanted to give you a few updates, first, uh. I had a meeting with Christine Stetson from the Hall Foundation, um, I gave her. Uh, I developed a list of questions based upon things that we've been hearing, what can you do with Hall, what's the D, all those questions. Um, we didn't meet long, but we had a good conversation. Um, she was bringing those questions back to the Hall Foundation. To have a conversation with them. And uh, most of those folks, I understand, are not in town. So, um. She's bringing to them. I in turn said, however I can support, the board can support, whatever we can do to to get information, to give information, glad to do that, if they want a tour. She talked to them, she emailed me and she said. They'd like a tour. So I'm setting up, I haven't responded to her yet, um, and she's given me a date. It would not be a public meeting. Um, but basically I'd be giving the Hall Foundation a a private tour when the building is closed. To that group. Um, for them to see. The status of the building now, what it looks like, how, you know, how some of the classrooms just look fantastic and. Some, you know, of the guts of things of 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 infrastructure where some of those issues are. So hopefully that will be early October and obviously, uh, the questions I gave her, she's looking to get answers for them in writing and sharing them back. But we had a really good conversation, so that's in the works. Second. We put out the checklist the night of the September fourth, Arthur, thank you for your. Uh, comments about the purpose of the checklist at the meeting, I felt that was spot on. And just wanna remind folks that are listening, the purpose of the checklist is to gather information for programming and spaces. For developing Ed specs, it is not about pricing yet. You can say all the things you want and then you prioritize. As you go forward, when you, someone put on their checklist that they want a swimming pool, it doesn't mean that's gonna be in in the Board of Ed spec, Ed spec. It just means that these are some things that what you knew, when you develop a price, you need to know how you're developing it, what spaces you need. So it was sent out on, I put it on Facebook. And I put it out through Messenger. It was sent out, uh, did I say Messenger, yes. Uh, I will share the data at the next Ed spec meeting, which I am hoping is gonna be September twenty thirty six P M. We have over a hundred and forty responses already. We got three or four from the night of the presentation, Brenda is inputting those into the forum, she will keep those if someone says, who did these, we have them. Uh, but there was a hundred and forty two online last I looked, which is good. It's getting some feedback, alright, you have a question about the checklist?
Yeah. Well, comment. Um, not to be a negative Nancy, but I did the checklist online and it looks like you can just keep blah, 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 doing however many you want.
You can.
So how do you interpret that data for multiples, potential multiples? On the same.
People don't wanna share the remote.
Just throwing it out there.
It's data for you to consider. From what I've seen so far, it doesn't look that way, and it's also not like. Again, it's not, I want a new school, I want a new school, I want a new school, or I don't wanna, you know, I wanna renovate halls, doesn't say those things. It says what class sizes do you want? It says what type of program you want, and some of the comments have actually. Been great. Like really good feedback, and the comments are not coming across consistently.
Okay.
So. It's, is it perfect? No. But to be able to complete it anonymously over collecting your email. Some people don't wanna put their name out there, I just didn't wanna restrict that, so, it chose to do it that way.
For even one checklist, uh. There is something else I wanna mention about it because this actually came up with some people that I was talking to and. Part of it is being interpreted as it's a. Preliminary vote as to whether or not we wanna have a new school or. No, I I get.
Yeah, 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 no, I know, I know you do.
But it's not, that's not coming across and so. I wanna be as clear as possible, it has nothing to do with whether or not you want. To have a new school or not, you get that vote at referendum. This is just for us to pass the data to try to come up with. The size, essentially the size of the school, and then how much the town is willing to invest in the school. Uh, it is not a vote of whether or not. You would like a new school, that's not what it is.
Maybe even use some of that. Uh, information, budget time, for what people want in the current school. Class sizes, what we were just talking about. Different programming.
You can also, and this is what people, why I say people don't have a real good grasp of this. You could apply, you could approve your Ed spec and do nothing. And your Ed spec is your Ed spec of what you're gonna try to apply to your current schools. So say you did nothing, no project passed, you still have an Ed spec. And you said, we got a lot of feedback on doing a shop class. How are we gonna make that work, what can we do? You would use your Ed spec as your backup. Right, we wanna have breakout spaces, that's kinda hard, but. What can we break, can we identify areas of the building where we have breakout spaces? You could do the identify, you can't do all of them. Right, but there's things, and it's easier to do it when you renovate or build. But you, there are ways to address things in the Ed spec. Whether you do something or not.
Yeah, the thing I wanted to ask though is for, as far as paper copies go, since that meeting is done. Where can anybody who had a paper copy, where can they return it?
They can either take a picture of it and email to us, or they can drop it off here, and we'll put it in. Yeah. Alright, who's catching the fly tonight? Third item. And this came up at the September fourth meeting, and I think it's important, um, again, what information is already out there? Uh, and I said I was gonna do this and I I I watched faces in the crowd. Many people would not wanna play poker with me because I tend to keep my face pretty straight, uh, but I watched faces when this came out. And when I said I was talking, working with the land use office to identify. Land. This is online already. This is, was done in uh March of twenty twenty two. This is every property. That was considered. And this review was done by um Scott Pelman and his staff. So this is, um. Oh my gosh, the name is escape collars. So, and they're all coded. So addresses are there, the owner at the time. These are all of the sites that were considered. And they're color coded by whether they were appropriate or not, and and why they were not considered, eighty percent wetlands and wetland soils. This is online, and not only that. But then it went further and when it went into the properties that were considered. This is also there too. That they were publicly and privately owned parcels, minimum nineteen and a half acres and above, and they were labeled A, B, um, you know, private one and two. And. Each of the items was there. They were, you know. Assess by safety, by uh utilities, all those things, and what I'll show you is anybody that wants to see this. If you simply go to the town website, I'm sorry, that our Board of Ed website. Under District Information, School Building Committee. If you go in here and just scroll down, there's a whole file of land property information. And all that information's here. So. I was working to see if there's any new properties that were, um. Out there at this point in time. I'm not getting much back. There's not been a lot of development, it's not like, you know, the the seventy acres that was there, it's pretty much status quo for this nineteen acres and above. Uh, there's, it will be up to, and this is gonna be my recommendation at this point, it will be up to the S B C. Once it's formed, to take this again and have. Their professional evaluate, do the same type of evaluation and go, they missed something, or hey, they missed this property. But they're all online at this point in time, so I just wanted to share that.
So is the land we were considering last time still available?
It is not developed. Um, and the last item, um, I've been thinking about this and you're, I know you're spending your non lapsing money, but, um. The proud of Dr. Proud of the enrollment projection is supposed to be done. He could do this in December for you. You don't have funds for this, but I think you should make the commitment and do it, it's. A couple thousand dollars to have it done. Um, and then we're already going to be getting the Nesdaq projection. Because you need that for pricing. People want pricing, I don't think you should be waiting for December to make the commitment to do it, because then you're getting it in March. And you're trying to get this, I think you need to just do it. So pricing for this, the cost is twenty two hundred dollars for the report. Um, and it's an approximately additional seven hundred dollars for a presentation. You're not really looking for the presentation, in my opinion, you're looking for the report. So.
Is it gonna take him ten years to do it?
If I commit to him now, he basically said he could do it for December. That's my point, and my worry is if we wait till December to say we need it done, it's gonna be March, and that's gonna be.
Too late.
Too late, or really.
If the money was really a problem, could we take it out of the million dollars that's dedicated to school building?
I think it's for repairs, but ironically, I think that's where they took the funds for. Uh, maybe not, I think they took it out of school building, out of the. School, school building committee.
That's another question, where will the school building?
They'll have to figure that out.
That's their issue, okay.
They'll have to figure that out, yeah.
Thank you.
What do you need from us to move forward?
Yeah, so. My feeling is I wanna commit to this point two hundred dollars, I I, it's not your budget, I would just use either refund money or non lapsing funds to do it. Um, refund is typically towards, um. I'd rather use that for towards students, so my suggestion would just be use non lapsing funds to do it. Um, and not commit to a presentation. Do you want the report with the numbers in it, because your numbers are gonna, what you're gonna use to figure out your space in it? So yes, you would have a motion for that one.
Um, I move that we. Request a, um. Count with it.
Yeah.
An enrollment study by Prada. To be used with for the school building committee. Do I have to?
Pay for with non lapsing.
Okay, pay for with non lapsing. Do we need to specify the amount?
Who's second then?
Uh, favor, Sam?
I.
Alright, good, we're checking stuff off.
So I don't know if you have any other discussion, but those were my four things that I wanna make sure you heard from me tonight for updates.
I tried, yeah, and I tried to make it clear last week, and I'll say it again, we are not trying to do the work. Of the school building committee, that is not our position, we are just trying to lay some of the groundwork, do a little bit of the preliminary work if we can. And give recommendations, invitations and suggestions. To them, so they kinda have a jumping off point, because we are in a specific timeframe, we're just trying to help as much as we can, obviously, we understand every step. That it is their deal, their decisions, their show, um, but we're just trying to assist to the best of our ability. Okay, today, anyone else need to say anything else about that topic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what's unfortunate for everybody. Uh, because this question actually came up to me from a couple people, and it's, it's a legitimate question. Um, this is what we got from Q A M back in April, this is the list of repairs. And a lot of people that I talked to. Wanted to use this as a comparison point, because you've got right now, it's very important. Is right now you've got the options for building a new school, new school, new site, new school, outside, renovate, as as all you got, those three options, but you've got nothing to compare. Those prices to what it would cost just to repair the building in general, well, we do. Got it last year, we have them. But it's just kinda long been forgotten because this project, you can only be reimbursed so high for a new building. Whatever that might look like. But this at least, and fifty six million dollars by the way, this. Uh, at least gives people a comparison of, okay, you know. There there's a lot of talk about. th- there's a lot of talk about fiscal responsibility. And apparently there's a lot of misconception about fiscal responsibility because I fully believe that spending let's call it twenty million dollars, build a sixty five million dollar school, or twenty million, twenty million to go to sixty five million dollar school is a lot more fiscally responsible than spending fifty five million dollars over fifty five years to repair a building that's a hundred years old plus and then seventy years with step. Um, but this at least provides the comparison of if we don't pass this, here is the list of repairs, the money that you're really looking at, and that's, that's out of pocket to the town, there's no reimbursement there because it's not reimbursable stuff, there's a roof grant, the HVAC grant is gone, that was something that Tammy told us on that Thursday meeting. That's all out of pocket, like all of this money, all of this fifty plus million dollars is out of pocket to the town. To me, it's way more fiscally responsible to go with the high, the high reimbursement rate for the new building, uh, and I think this provides that, provides that data. So my only question, I couldn't find this on the website.
Oh, so just going to say, I, I just made a note, I'll, I'll, when I do the S B C twenty twenty five, I'll put that in.
Cause I think this is a good thing for people to be able to pull down and say, okay, well, here's, here's what we're looking at if we don't do this. And the other point to me, and this was brought up in our last meeting, but was then corrected in the Thursday meeting, is we can't use this reimbursement rate for repairs. If the new school doesn't pass, whatever it looks like, if whatever option doesn't pass, it's gone, the reimbursement rate's gone, and Tammy made it clear, you can't use it for repairs. So this is, this is the shot that we have, and it was mentioned that we have to, we're not, we have to, but it'd be a good idea to get the referendum done as quickly as possible, not only for the base cap that they're thinking of putting on, but also because if it happens to fail, then we can use some of this reimbursement rate for repairs, and we can't do that. So it's only to try to be that, try to beat that uh space cap. Uh, space reimbursement cap that's coming up at the end of June. So.
That could be option four in the referendum.
I would usually want to be personally, it's not my call point. A very good point.
Hmm.
I, I think the, the problem with, um, the, like presenting that is, that's almost seen as optional, like that list of repairs is seen as, well, we don't have to do that. And as opposed to like when we vote and, and have the new school, yes, in fact, we do need to have to do that, so like we've put out repairs for a long time for various reasons, so I feel like there's this, there's this prevailing theory on, with some folks in town that if they vote no, then we don't have to do anything. And, um, I feel like that's something that, uh, we have to counter or, or encounter and, um, figure out how to address also. I really do think there's people that just say we're not going to do anything to schools.
With a no vote, we start chipping away at fifty six million dollars. And then it costs the town so. My point is only a, a, a financial point.
Yeah.
If you want a comparison of, because the argument was, I mean, and again, I'll say it's a good one. We've got numbers, rough numbers, they call it for, for a new school only. And we do have numbers for repairs, but here, they've just been pushed aside because, because of the reimbursement rate in the past. So this, to me, have just, not even, I'm not saying presented, but have it available for people to look at as a comparison number, because that's your comparison number.
What's the data on that?
Uh, this one is due April second of twenty twenty four.
Is that the one that we after?
So, no, because the one that we were doing is, I have that one too, but that one has, well, that one has renovate, so this one has renovate options from Q A and M. So if you did the renovate and do, there is reimbursement, but that's one of the options in the, in the red, red, so that's like the raw repairs or this, this.
Okay.
This one is the one where they were like, well, they took into account what we wanted to do and then they said, well, no, you don't know what you're talking about, here's what you should do, here's how you should bundle, and here's what it would look like in a renovate, here's some reimbursement, and still, I mean, that number's still.
I think a lot of people have the misconception that, oh, well, just fix what we have, why are we spending so much money to buy a new school, and I think that that is a good point to be like, well. You know, cause all that, that I thought that at first too, you know what I mean? I'm like, oh, you know, that's what we have. Oh, holy crap, like it's, you know, however much as much, but.
You said at one point too, lefty day that, um, that this was made in tears, so first it was like safety and codes. So that's just not like, only stuff that could get fixed, it's like legitimate things where we are out of compliance with particular codes and so on, and so. Yeah, that's hardcore evidence. You're gonna have to make a list of all this stuff that we have. Okay, any other discussion on school building budget? We are gonna try to get together on September twenty third at six P M.
Is that good, is that?
Yes.
Can we go at the six thirty?
At the time I mean, I just work for me.
Yes.
Yeah, so I probably coming from stock or.
I mean, I can, I could do seven if you want seven.
But I'm going to stay on a few minutes later, we'd be better than me.
All right, six thirty it is.
We'll talk about Ed specs and, um, we're gonna revisit the grade board conversation as well. Um, hopefully at that meeting, or expected at that meeting, will be the checklist data from Ed spec here.
Yep.
So people still have time to complete those and get them to by the twenty third, they could probably continue to roll in after that, um, so just have that continually um, update the, whatever they're doing, it just won't be part of the discussion that particular evening. Uh, and we have asked the Board of Selectment to please start forming a school building committee um, on the behalf of our two school buildings. All right, uh, we are on agenda item twelve, present speak, if you're in person, you can raise your hand in real life, if you're online, you can raise your hand virtually, you have five minutes, please say your name and your address, hello to M C.
Hi, this is, uh, Michelle Christensen Birch Meadow Lane. Um, I want to thank you for the conversations and for giving our fourth graders the attention and support they deserve. I hope the discussion helps ensure that future grades also receive the resources they need early on setting them up for the long-term success. I wish it wouldn't have taken the last meeting of her parents to speak up for this to be considered. It is disappointing that these concerns were not addressed sooner, and as a parent of a fourth grader, after the last meeting, I felt very frustrated at the inequity in what came across as a blatant disregard for the fourth graders. I truly appreciate the thoughtful discussions that happened tonight. I also hope that the district is able to fulfill this need for our students and find the right candidate with the proper credentials, because this isn't just about putting a body in the classroom. Placing a substitute or faculty member without the right qualifications for something any longer than very short term could create further challenges and our students deserve better, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tullis?
Oh, good evening all, Ralph Tullis here, forty seven Billishville Road. Uh, I, I, it would be helpful if Phil could point out where this feedback checklist can be found on either the town website or the Board of Ed website. I just looked, it's not on the homepage for either. So how is someone supposed to find it unless they're a Facebook groupie? I, I would hope you would respond to my question and, and rather than just sit there with blank faces. Um, that's my, that's my, that's my only comment, thank you.
Thanks, do you have a copy or copy of that here? This evening, will you make a copy?
No.
I may.
But I can put it on the website.
Yeah, I'll stick it in his mailbox on my way home, that's what we're gonna do about that, okay.
That's not how I wanted to see it, I wanted to see it as a checklist online, I thought that's how you were capturing the data.
No problem, it'll be on the website tomorrow, both websites, although I don't control talent.
Well, do what you, do what you can.
Yeah.
Okay, so Matt?
I'm Matt Clark, forty two Burt Latham Road, um, so Phil, when, when you send the transmitter letter, can you provide any information that you have on, um, parameters for S B C, we got requirements, parameters, any files? If you could cite any regulation, we need some kind of a pointer, I want to make sure that this is done correctly, so any information you could provide would be helpful.
Thank you. That's great. Okay. And anyone? Us ten? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Um, did anyone want to make a board comment this evening?
Yeah, I should, I want to show you that one quick, um. First off, I, I echo Michelle's comments about the discussion that we had, I, I do appreciate, I was, I mean, I made my points, I was largely silent, um, I don't want to be perceived as someone who's just trying to get something for their kid. Um, and I, I'm trying not to come across like, that's not what I'm looking at as, but I can see how you do that way, but I really do appreciate the, everybody's discussion about it, um, and where it ended up. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, is I'm very happy to see that the new playground is gone. And I'm happy to see that because a lot of people think it's my idea, it was, you know, it was a spirit for it, it wasn't my idea, it was again, my wife's idea. Um, and she's a towns person who doesn't always like to come forward with these things and likes to push me to open my big mouth and, and do it. Um, but it was a fantastic idea and it was a great way to get our kids something and my point was with those art of ones, because I think that whole art process was terrible from the beginning, because I think a lot of areas got things that weren't affected by COVID and that's what those songs are supposed to be for. And I remember making a comment to a prior board before I was on it, that I was disappointed they didn't do anything and Phil actually reached out to me and asked, you know, what, what are you thinking of doing? And I didn't come up with any fantastic ideas because I wasn't entrenched with what we have here, but that idea came from my wife and my point to all of this is that she's not a towns person who wants to be in the public, but obviously she has good ideas. And I think there's a lot of townspeople like that, and I think that's what this checklist is trying to capture when it comes to the, the big project like the new school, is we're trying to grab as many people who may not want to be in the public light, but still have great ideas and get them a way to get them to us so we can consider them and if, you know, we can push them forward. Uh, and I hope that more people honestly reach out to all of us personally to say things like that, because I think, I think we're gaining some steam in participation, to be honest with you, there's twelve people on, online, which is, of course, yeah, significantly more than it's, it's been once prior, so, um, I really hope that as a board, we're gaining some more, um, some more eyes.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, sorry, um, I just wanted to echo in our smaller group, um, myself and saying, it was really great last week to have the opportunity to sit with all of the boards together and have collaborative conversations about this thing that we've been trying to move forward forever and not just the school building project, but the collaboration of boards in town, I think is severely lacking and that seemed like a good step in the right direction.
All right, and we can, did you want to say something, Paul?
I'm just gonna do the welcoming thing to.
Yes, I love when you do that.
Okay, to, uh, tonight's first names, so welcome to Chris and Dean and Jen and Olivia and Leslie, welcome to Wellington and thank being here for our children.
Thank you. All right, we would like to make you a turn, thanks.
Say it again.
Wow. Hi. Any favor?
Hi.
All right, Bernie, and what, like ten more, thank you.